There we go, Granicus just turned on for me.
Okay, now and I'm my signal is audio on Facebook as well, so.
Let's go.
We're gonna go ahead, um, we're ready to go here, we're gonna go ahead and move forward, we're gonna, um, we will go to our 6.2 item, our 9:02 a.m. item, our consideration of an update on COVID-19. Uh, Dr. Gary Pace.
Hi, good morning, um, good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to talk this morning about the COVID response in the county. I'm gonna make this brief today because things are, uh, pretty stable. We now have 41 cases total, uh, seven are active. Uh, we've, we got a few new cases over the weekend and a new one last night. Um, these are from the contact tracing we've been able to do so far, we have, um, most, there seem to be two clusters that these folks are part of, so when we go and do the case investigation, the contact tracing, we've identified some people that have been exposed and tested them and they're turning positive, so at this point, uh, for the vast majority of these, we have not found, um, a lot of, uh, un- unknown sources, they were mainly from contact from outside the county for the initial case and then, um, within the household or within a family. So that's a good sign that we're not seeing a bunch of cases that we don't, we can't figure out where they had likely exposure. Um, and that's really the question about community transmission. So, uh, you know, in terms of the numbers with the cases and, uh, nobody's in the hospital right now, that, um, all, all those sorts of things are stable. Um, in Sonoma County right now, they're having a bit of a surge, they had 50 new cases yesterday and a, a new death, so they've had a total of five deaths, so just to be aware of the juxtaposition of the neighboring county having quite a bit of new cases and, uh, uh, they've got a handful of people in the hospital that are COVID related, so, um, you know, it's out there, there, we're seeing rising cases around the country as things are opening, but we seem to be pretty stable at this point and, um, managing quite well. Um, I plan to start giving, uh, some of the demographic data, it'll go on the, uh, the portal there around, once we get hit 50 cases, I've been trying to hold off until we get to 50 cases just so that, um, we can protect the identity of people and, and allow people to not have it, everybody be able to figure out who they are if they turn positive, so that'll probably start, I would assume, within the next week or so, people are, some of our team is working on getting the platform ready to start doing that, probably just, uh, we'll put out, um, age range within some ranges, gender, um, uh, probably zip code or some way to identify area around the county, and then the last piece will be likely place they got the, um, got the infection, whether it was from out of the county or from a household contact, from a workplace, you know, three or four different buckets like that, so we can get a little bit of a, communicate a little bit of a sense of where these are from, probably we'll just update those weekly or so, so that, uh, you know, people won't see like, oh, that 45 to 60 age range has a new one in it, so that's obviously where the new case was, we have so few cases at this point that it's pretty easy to identify this, and that's why we're being so protective. Um, so just to further kind of give the update, uh, the restrictions on businesses are pretty much across the board removed at this point in terms of businesses being, uh, closed by restrictions, so we're, we're still following the governor's orders and pretty much everything's open. The one main, um, restriction at this point is on large group activities, and so we're trying to keep those limited and, uh, and kind of happening in the safest way. The governor's shelter in place order is still in effect, so it's a little bit confusing because how can it be no shelter, that we, we have to shelter in place, but some of these things are open, but I think they just, all the pieces haven't quite lined up yet, but, um, as far as I've been able to tell, things are going reasonably well in the community and, um, uh, majority of people seem to be wearing masks and keeping with the social distancing, and so all in all, things seem to be going pretty well. Um, the governor did come out with a new masking order, uh, on Thursday where basically made it mandatory to wear masks, it's pretty much the same order we had in place already, so it doesn't really change things that much, but it's expanded it to the whole state at this point. Many of the counties, probably about half the counties, had masking orders in place, and this just kind of made it more consistent. So, in terms of the testing update, we are continuing to do the Verily test site, it's, uh, going well, they're using the mid turbine at Swabs now, which is the more comfortable Swabs. There's some work going, um, and we're in conversation with Supervisor Crandall about maybe having a site on the North Shore every other Wednesday, alternating with the Wednesdays on, in Middletown, and so there may be a site on the North Shore, you know, infrequently, but still with some regularity, so people can count on that. Um, we have gotten some help with some volunteers, Supervisor Sabatier has been helping and we appreciate that, it's, uh, and, uh, we can still use some more volunteers and probably we'll be needing volun- some volunteer help throughout the, the summer, um, these can be clinical people, have one sort of role, and then there's another role, working with, uh, traffic management and, and sort of set up things like that, so we appreciate when people contact us and they can just, if anybody's interested, you can just reach out to the, to our, uh, Mohac, M-H-O-A-C, at lakecountyca.gov, uh, email address, or look on our website for that. Um, the, uh, one of the big things that's happening with testing right now is the nursing homes are, are having to test everybody, all their staff and all the residents during the month of, uh, June to get a baseline, and then to do ongoing testing after that, uh, so two of the three nursing homes have tested all their people, we're still, the results are starting to trickle in, but it's so far so good, and the other one will be done probably by the end of this week, so at that point, it'll be very nice that we've, uh, been able to get all the residents and all the staff in the nursing homes checked to make sure there's not infection in there that we're just not picking up. Um, half of the deaths in California are in the nursing homes, so it's a very vulnerable place, and once the infection gets in there, it's really hard to, uh, manage it, so we're doing, the, all three of the sites are doing a great job of, of working hard to keep that out. The senior centers, we had a meeting with the senior centers the other day, they are all very tuned into this as well, so, I mean, one of the things I'm really seeing in the county is, is that the, the folks are really stepping up, you know, realizing what the vulnerable populations are, and people are really, are really, um, responding in a good way, I very much appreciate that. Um, so the housing question, uh, uh, we have, um, been working with some hotels in the area to help with some of the homeless population and also for people that need to, uh, isolate, but don't have a good way to do that in their home, one of the, one of the services ended yesterday, they call it Project Room Key, which is for high, um, highly vulnerable, uh, high-risk people that are, that don't have a home, and so they've been housed in one of the hotels, that project ended, the funding ended, uh, yesterday, so we're in the process of, of kind of making other arrangements to keep this going, hopefully we can keep it all going through the summer. Um, the contact tracing is going fine at this point, our team's working hard and we have, uh, some help with volunteers, we're trying to connect in with the state system and, uh, but at this point, we've been, they've been doing a great job of when a case is identified to do the investigation and then to, uh, identify the contacts and, and track it all back, and so, so far so good with all that. So the last piece I really want to talk about is the reopening process, um, as I said, we're moving along, we are looking at the triggers and the variance metrics that are, that the state has put out, the state now has a monitoring system, there's about eight counties or something that are in the sort of worrisome zone, and so they're keeping an eye on it, we are not there, everything's fine from all of our, our metrics right now, we are in the process, it'll probably take a week or two, but we're gonna try to get, get a, get it on the dashboard so that people can, uh, be following the metrics as, as we do, um, so it's gonna take a little bit to kind of get that all set up, but hopefully within a week or two, if you have a question about what's happening with our metrics, you can look at it and see like, oh no, everything's good, or, oh, this is not looking good, what, what are we doing about it, so we're trying to get that set up so that the public can be aware of that. Um, and I think the, the, basically, like I say, we're in a good place, the amount of infection seems to be manageable at this point, it's concerning to see some of the other areas around, so hopefully the isolation and the, and the tactics people are taking, uh, to protect themselves is, is going well, I think doing the masking, doing the social distancing, being careful, especially if you're in a vulnerable group, is really important here, the more people are able to do that, the, I think, the less problem we're gonna see, and the more likely it is that we're gonna be able to keep the businesses open for a long period, we, we definitely are watching and in contact with our partners around, and if, um, I think, really trying to develop a bit of a strategy too, so that if things do start going the wrong direction, we don't have to take the heavy-duty tactic that we took a couple months ago, which is just shut everything down, but more to try to be surgical and try to, um, direct it more specifically to the, to the sites that, where they seem to be most at risk, or where we seem to be identifying there's more of a leakage going on, so we're trying to develop this strategy over the next couple weeks, uh, in anticipation of potential problems down the road, but so far so good, and, um, yeah, just, uh, glad we're seeing such good results right now, so thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, go ahead and open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much, thank you for the update, I, I agree, I was, uh, doing some heavy, uh, number crunching over the weekend, uh, we definitely do seem to be stable at this moment, uh, the numbers, uh, seem to mimic a lot what our numbers looked like the month before, uh, we'll see if things change, we're not done with this month yet, uh, but what I do appreciate seeing is we seem to be testing about four times more in the month of June than we were in the month of April, where obviously we were struggling really hard to get a good number of tests, so Verily has really helped us out, uh, and I'm sure that public health has gotten a little bit more wiggle room to do more testing than they were incapable to do before at the beginning. Um, one of the things that I experienced, and, uh, it's a question that I did ask, uh, Dr. Pace in private, but I'm comfortable asking here in public, um, I know that we have our testing sites, one in Lakeport is in Mendocino College, Mendocino College is closed right now, uh, so not a lot of activity, not a lot of traffic, so I guess that could be conducive to making it simple to do the testing, uh, but it doesn't make it simple for it to be very visible for everybody to know that it's there, uh, in Clear Lake, it's at the li- the Public Library, which is kind of behind the main strip of Olympic, uh, where there's not a lot of activity there unless you know it's there, and so wondering if there's possibilities of doing it in a more public area where people can see that it's available to them, because we can advertise all we want, some people will still say, I didn't know there was fireworks this year, uh, you know, things like that, like, some people just don't always see the advertisement, but when they go down the street and they see something, uh, it, it's kind of hard not to see this, it's, it's fairly large, it's got a, a bunch of cones, uh, setting it aside and keeping things safe, uh, so just wondering if it's possible to look at a more public area, or if it was the, uh, simple access of, uh, property that was not being utilized, uh, versus where, obviously, if there's more traffic, it is being more utilized.
Right, um, well, so, you know, there's certain things that are needed for the site to make it work, Wi-Fi, some bathrooms, certain amount of space, um, and we actually, so in Lakeport, we had it up at, in a much more public area, it was right up by Fifth, uh, near the lake, and, uh, so it was a, it was a really good site, beautiful, probably the most beautiful Verily site in the country, and, um, but once the, once there started to be more activity, once the lake opened up, then there started to be problems with, uh, the parking area, because there's a fair amount of space that's needed, so, you know, it's a little bit, uh, you bring up a really good point about, uh, just visibility for the public, but it's kind of balancing that out with these specific kind of technological needs, the infrastructure needs, which are fairly minimal, but, uh, it needs to be in a place where there's quite a bit of room and that it's not gonna interfere with the business, so, uh, you know, you had brought it up yesterday, and I think, uh, we'll hook you up with, um, the folks that have been, there, there's a lot of negotiations with the Verily site to get this to happen, it's not just like the, oh yeah, the great idea, and then they go, it takes a while and it's a fair, fair amount of dance, so, but I'll hook you up with, um, the folks that are doing those negotiations and then we can figure out if there's a better way to do it, I don't think anybody's particularly wedded to that site, uh, other than just it was working and, um, it was available, and now they're getting ready to open the library, but on Mondays they tend to be closed anyhow, I think, and, um, so we've had some discussions about what happens when the library opens as well, so I think it's, you know, it's totally open and it's just a matter of putting the planning time into figuring it out.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I would love to be involved, and I know today was the first day that the library was gonna do kind of a soft opening, uh, there was definitely some, uh, buzz going around at the Verily site of, wonder what that's gonna look like for us, uh, so we'll see how that was impacted, but I'd love to be part of that conversation, and, and obviously, the, the major point that I'm making is, I just don't want the state to have any reason to have to put us on this list right now that we're not on, or any reason to kind of wag their finger and say, you better watch yourself, you're not meeting our requirements, right now we are doing that, and I just wanna make sure that we, uh, keep it up.
Any other questions or, uh, comments for board members? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Simon, I just wanted to, uh, I know that, uh, Dr. Pace mentioned earlier about, uh, working on a North Shore site, and I have been working on that, Public Services Director Lars and Dean from the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator has been working on it, we have a spot at the Upper Lake Park, so they're working out the details on that, and, uh, hopefully we'll be having that up by July 1st if possible, you know, we're doing, they're doing, they're doing their best, and of course, um, I'm doing my best to try to link them together, and looking for another spot over either in East or Listerne as well, and, uh, we'll see what we can get done, but in the meantime, at least we have one target, and so hopefully that'll be up and running, if not, we'll adjust and try to do what we can from there, you know, it's just like the, the, it's almost like the fog of war, you just gotta move on, if that doesn't work out, you go on with something else, so, um, yeah, just wanted to update on.
Okay, uh, any other board members' questions or comments at this point? Supervisor Sabatier?
One last question, I, um, I, I am happy that, I mean, I don't wanna hit 50, it would be great if we didn't, but I am happy that at that point there will be some demographic information to maybe, uh, give us a better idea of who, um, really are the high-risk groups that we should be paying attention to, I know you know, because you have all that information, uh, but we don't have that information, the public doesn't have that information, um, you kind of broke down a little bit as to what the demographics will be, I didn't hear you say ethnicity, uh, and I'm just wondering if that will be a part of that as well, because I know there's been a lot of conversations about, uh, different ethnicities being impacted more, and just wondering if we follow that same trend, or if we're bucking that trend.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question, um, there's been a lot of discussion amongst us around that, um, in, um, other parts of the state, other, in Sonoma County, there's been a lot of information coming out about the, uh, the demographic breakdown there, and, um, I, I'm a little bit, I, I, you know, I think where we've come to at this point is a reluctance to share the demographic information, the ethnicity, just because of, um, the numbers are so small that I'm not sure that, uh, it may end up causing some unintended consequences. Um, so, uh, what I'd rather do is sort of give information that allows us to, that allows the relevant agencies to target interventions a- as needed, for example, if people are mainly getting infected in the, in the family situation, in the household situation, that's really the most relevant information, I think, or if they're getting, uh, infected at the workplace, I think that's the relevant information, we may need to kind of parse out which workplaces are the most, uh, most, um, uh, where they're most at risk, if it's more, um, the elders in the nursing homes, that, you know, so I think the way that I'm trying to frame this is to try to have it be relevant in terms of understanding where the highest risk places are, and I'm not sure that ethnicity is the, is the best way to do that in the county, since there's, um, you know, it's just because of the way that breaks out, we do have some data about testing of the different, um, ethnic groups, and so if that was relevant, but I'm a little bit reluctant to do it, just for example, if, say, uh, you know, the over 65 range was the, was the most likely to be infected, and an older person shows up in the, in the gas station, maybe the person might be reluctant to work with them because they were afraid that they were high-risk of being exposed or something like that, so I think there's, just because our numbers are so low, and there's, um, you know, I, I, I'm reluctant to go there with the ethnicity, I, I think we can talk about it in sort of general terms maybe, but, um, yeah, so, I, but I'm interested if you have a different opinion about that.
No, I was just, I know that it's been a, a topic that's been discussed, uh, I know, for example, in Sonoma County, uh, I, I heard loud and clear from, uh, some of my friends out there that, uh, uh, the Latino groups were unhappy with the, uh, um, comments made about not, uh, enforcing the rules down there because of the, uh, increase in infections in the Latino community, and so I just know that it, it's something that's relevant to our surrounding areas, it's something that we've been hearing in the news, wanted to hear from you, and I don't disagree with your statement, uh, that at this moment with numbers being so low, it might highlight something that doesn't need to be highlighted, uh, and it may create, uh, negative consequences that, unintended consequences, um, and, and the way people might be treated, uh, because of those numbers looking larger than they might necessarily be, so I don't disagree, just wanted to ask, uh, since I know it's been a part of, uh, many of the numbers that we've seen, whether it's statewide or nationwide.
Right, thank you. Okay, any more questions from the board at this point? All right, see none, we'll go ahead and we're gonna open it up to the public? Don't see any hands up, Jake?
Yeah, so it doesn't like, like, doesn't look like we have any raised hands, uh, I can unmute the floor and we can proceed with that.
Okay.
All right, the floor is unmuted, if you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake?
All right.
All right, well, that's a first, uh, we'll go ahead and bring that back to, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and close it and, uh, bring it back to the board at this point. Um, Supervisor Sabatier?
I have one more question, and I, I believe I know the answer to this, but I just wanna ask it publicly to Dr. Pace, uh, with the new, um, uh, order provided by Governor Newsom where masking is now mandatory everywhere, which I've heard loud and clear from Modaw County that they're not happy with that, uh, but did that come with any, um, financial support? Did that come with any support, or is it just an order again that, uh, basically, here you go, handing it on down and the counties have to be, are the ones to have to deal with the order?
Right, well, it seems, it's, um, there's nothing came down, no, no guidance around enforcement, no financial support, no people to come help.
Supporting.
Down, I think it's, to me, it looks like what they decided to do, they'd been talking about this for a while, but there was no indication they were gonna move forward, uh, but I think what they decided was to, that it was important to give some clarity from the state level about how important this was, and, uh, that it, it, it was ambiguous enough before that, uh, I think they felt that they were sending a confusing message, and it's very clear that the, the current thinking from the people that study this and look at this, that if we wanna slow down the spread as, and we're seeing some rising cases now, that it was really important to give a clear message about this, the enforcement part still is very, um, dealt with on a local level and, you know, that may change, I don't know, you know, if things start getting worse, maybe they're going to end up bringing in some kind of enforcement mechanism, but at this point, you know, they've left that to the local jurisdictions, yeah.
Okay, and that's what I thought the answer was, I just wanted to put it out there, thank you.
Well, thank you for your report, Dr. Pace, I know that, um, you know, you hit on it, I wanted to report a little bit on the reopening committee, the conversation we had, uh, yesterday a little bit about as we move forward, I think you used the perfect term as far as being surgical, uh, we know it will not look the same if there is a large surge in cases, uh, it's gonna look different than it was when we started back in March, and I know those conversations at least have started and will continue those on a weekly basis as we move forward, uh, hopefully nothing will need to be implemented, that's the ultimate goal, but having a plan in place before us wouldn't be proactive instead of reactive is, uh, I think real important, so I know the conversation started yesterday and, uh, you know, it'll continue on, um, so that's just a little update on the, you know, the conversations that's happening with the reopening committee, everything is open, and we will track and, you know, kind of just, uh, see how we're moving along in the process here, uh, as that group moves on, so, um, wanna thank you for convening that group, uh, also, and, uh, yeah, there was some pretty heated discussions and other things over the last few weeks, but it seems, they seem to be moving in the right direction, uh, with everything being up and open now, and I appreciated the conversation of getting it open as soon as possible, so we have a couple weeks before our July 4th weekend, uh, to understand exactly how things are gonna operate, so we're not dealing with it on that holiday weekend, so the reopening committee, I think, did a great job with Dr. Pace, uh, in moving that forward, I don't know if Supervisor Crandall wants to talk anymore about the reopening committee, but, um, what we've committed to do is kind of just report out as, um, the two board, uh, members who are appointed on where that discussions are going, what's happening each weekend on the reopening committee, so both the community and also the board is up to date. Uh, go ahead, EJ?
Yeah, so, um, just, just to touch on, uh, what we talked about yesterday, I know that, um, that we started discussing, uh, future measures, uh, for down the road, if, uh, if, if numbers start to climb, and, um, we're starting to look at the, the area of surgically closing things, or however we're gonna do that, um, in, in, just like we said on these meetings and even in those meetings, along with the Blue Collar Committee meetings, there's a lot of information that they've already provided, so I'm gonna work on collaborating that, um, and bringing it to our meeting next week so we can discuss, um, and have the work that they've already put into it, which is a lot of great ideas to maintaining an open, uh, business in their, to respect to their business entities, uh, that way we're not doing a blanket approach to every business, it's not fair for, uh, you know, a flower shop to be treated as a restaurant, you know, things like that, so, um, looking to, to go ahead and collaborate all that and bring it forward next week, and I know we'll be meeting this week in the Blue Collar Committee Wednesday, so once we get some, I'll, I'll, I'll get a dialogue with them and see if they have any last things that I wanna put in, and just keep moving forward that way, so just wanted to, um, update there, yeah.
Right, uh, you know, before we leave, uh, this report too, the testing is going on daily, uh, in Lake County, if you like, you, you may have been in an area or traveled, done other things, encourage folks, if, if you feel like you need to be tested, get signed up on the Verily website and, and get that taken care of, um, you know, it's all about protecting the community, uh, all these discussions, including the masking, uh, issues, um, you know, so all those things are things that we're looking to do to keep our businesses open and our community safe altogether, so, um, you know, I, I don't have much more, um, to add, I don't see any other hands up, um, before we go, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier?
And I believe that they're in Middletown this week on Wednesday, is that correct?
Yes, yes, they are.
So Monday and Tuesday in Clear Lake, this Wednesday in Middletown, and Thursday, Friday in Lakeport.
Yep, in Middletown is at the Lions Club, it's right there at Central Park, it's a nice open area, I know folks that have gone through and done the testing, and, um, you know, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty painless.
It tickles.
It tickles. Okay. You know, um, one other thing too, um, that I would like to address that I haven't been able to is, um, you know, I apologize about, uh, the technical difficulties and everything, um, that, that we were, um, you know, we were having at the beginning there, so thank you for being patient, um, with us, and, uh, I think that's it, any more questions for board members or comments? Okay, Dr. Pace, thank you very much. Oh, wait a second, uh, you know what, we might have had, sorry about that, before we move on, but, uh, Carol, uh, can you try, uh, or is it Jake, Jake, I guess we had an individual who missed public comment. Carol uh can you try uh or is it Jake Jake I guess we had an individual who missed public comment uh due to some technical difficulties uh Jake do you have uh that individual gonna go ahead and open up reopen up public input uh we did have one person who tried to get in here but had some technical difficulty so Jake is that person on now
yes yes that person is here uh I will unmute them Marty uh I have um opted to unmute your mic should see that unmute now please confirm uh with your first
can you hear me
yes yes we can hear you
okay my name's Marty uh Marty Northrup um I have two comments one is um in re in response to what Dr Pace said he said that last Tuesday or Thursday Dr New uh Newsen um had a masking order it was not an order it was a recommendation there is no law and in California and a statutory law is one um that was passed by the state and even if there was a law it is highly unlikely meaning that it breaks established law including our Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution Constitution protecting our privacy um as people and then also my second comment okay I have three comments the third one is I couldn't get in last week there were a lot of technical difficulties and these are very challenging for those of us that either don't have the equipment or tech technologically challenged um so I wrote uh an email to my representative well my supervisor Tina um and I referenced the Brown Act that um gives us as public members of the public uh right to attend and participate in meetings of local legislative bodies and I don't appreciate that I never even got a response Tina um I mean
well you know
I don't feel represented
okay all right and today we're trying uh this agenda item obviously uh is uh to talk about covid at this point and um later down the road we can talk but we are gonna have a discussion about meetings later on down on item six point one on our agenda item later on so
actually Mr Chair six point one is public input she could state this then or
oh okay
she could state it uh during the demonstration of the meetings which is at seven thirty
yeah I didn't have it right in front of me as far as
oh sorry
we're gonna talk about hybrid meetings uh later on too so okay
thank you
thank you very much
thank you very much
okay Jake we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board close it and bring it back to the board Supervisor Brown do you have a comment or are you just writing something okay all right all right Dr Pace thank you very much appreciate the report on covid nineteen okay we're gonna go ahead and go to um our uh six point one item public comment
thank you Mr Chair if I could you do have one emailed public comment attached to your agenda so I wanted to call that to your attention and then I also wanted to use this opportunity to make a brief introduction if I could and um we are going to have a new director of our UC program as Rachel Elkins is retiring around July first Rachel is going to continue in a volunteer capacity or excuse me it may be an extra help capacity after she retires but we have a new person that will take over um as the director for that small office and so Jake are you able to turn on the video or allow the video of Carmen Cock who is here with us Carmen can you hear us Carmen you're on mute if you can take yourself off mute and uh if you have video that would be great if you don't that's okay too
uh can you guys hear me
yeah
yes
here we are
um
go ahead Carmen
um all right I'm gonna try to stop my video and see if this works
so while she's turning on her video I'll just um starting July one she'll be taking over as the co-director of our um small office uh the UC office this is the program that operates our our um four H programs and our master gardener and more and um so there she is hi hi Carmen would you introduce yourself and tell the board a little bit about yourself
yeah um so hi good morning everyone thank you for um allowing me to just kinda introduce myself so my name is Carmen and I keep looking at this site because I have like multiple screens so I apologize uh my name is Carmen and I have served as the four H um youth development advisor for Lake and Mendocino Counties for about four and a half years now um and starting July first or June thirtieth um I am looking forward to serving as a department head for the University of California Carpeif Extension with a lot of training guidance and mentorship from Rachel um and I'm looking forward to connect with the other departments um and also to represent the University of California uh Carpeif Extension because it does house a lot of programs that are really important to commit like the four H program and the the master gardener program as uh Carol had mentioned so um yeah I I look forward to uh meeting more with all of you and connecting with you as well so thank you
welcome to the team
we have our outgoing director Rachel Elkins is in the room too I wanted to give her an opportunity to speak um we wanted to recognize Rachel with a proclamation and um she humbly declined um but nonetheless we appreciate and value all the years of service she has given to this program
okay is Rachel on
yes here I I'm
Eddie I um I'm um I um I I don't I don't need to go on video thank you um I need a proclamation because I'm not really going anywhere I have worked for university um almost forty years I decided that I wanted to be a farm advisor and work with my growers and um I had enough grant through the auspices of the pear industry um I am able to return to work on a part-time basis so my off old I am going to be a worker bee and I'm very excited about it but I am there for Carmen I'm um I will be working helping with master gardeners needed um hopefully have but I just wanted to have time for my own life you know after nearly forty years working for UC I started as a secretary there so uh I'm very really excited that Carmen is going to be our department head uh John Harper will be county director for UC purposes from Four Lake and Mendocino Counties um just to let you know um we uh we plan on carrying on on our programs and I will um as a as a remain um a member of our team so um that's that and uh thank you all for all of your support and whatever I can do to be helpful um here thank you
thank you okay um congratulations on uh your your semi-retirement and Carmen welcome um and uh thank you uh I'm District One Supervisor Mo Simon I don't know I haven't you know met you personally so welcome and I appreciate that I don't know if the rest of the board wants to introduce themselves
and I just may goals um as a retiree because and re up
we're getting you you're cutting in and out as far as yeah
huh
you're cutting in and out we're losing catching some and you know you're kind of choppy on the
oh
on your um
don't know why I'm on my laptop
okay
is that better
yeah
okay I just this is sort of for Rob but one of my um goals is to really get our Lake County Farm Home and Four H Foundation back up and running again so I'm excited about doing that um I'll actually have time now to work to keep working on that we have a good new board of directors that uh
okay thank you Rachel
and I wanna say to uh Rachel thank you very much for everything that you've done for us and thank you for wanting to continue to serve the community in a different capacity uh definitely appreciate the fact that you want to uh enjoy the finer points of life uh but also appreciate that you wanna still maintain a certain connection uh to what you were doing already uh Carmen welcome to the team uh looking forward to working with you and getting to meet you in person um I think this is uh lots of changes are happening and some of these things are gonna uh give us new opportunities as well so thank you to both of you uh and looking forward to uh what's coming in the future
thank you
Supervisor Brown
Shabatier District Two Supervisor
so I've been very fortunate to work with Rachel from day one even prior to that with through Four H and all that and she's done an amazing job um and she'll say this as well but I'm gonna say it that she does an amazing job because she has an amazing staff over there and I know we're welcoming me welcoming Carmen to the team Carmen's been a part of the team for quite a while now just not in this capacity and she and others over there are the reason that uh Rachel has experienced so much success and uh we've been very lucky to have Rachel and that entire crew over there so thank you both
thank you
thank you
okay uh Supervisor Scott
well I I'm I'm glad Rachel's gonna be um doing what her passions are but staying in our community staying active and just welcome um Carmen and um just you know welcome and thank you for being here
you
Supervisor Crandall
yes Rachel thank you for all the work and uh hey you know enjoy your time because it's very important and you worked hard for it um and Carmen welcome aboard I'm the supervisor of Area Three uh Eddie Crandall
okay Carmen welcome I don't know if you wanna close it out here with any comments but uh go ahead
uh no just thank you for again allowing me this opportunity to meet with you guys through a different platform virtual but nonetheless thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to connecting more in the future
all right thank you
thank you
new generation
all right is there um and that will uh conclude our uh nine oh one our six point one item our public input six point we'll go ahead and move to our six point three item six point three our nine thirty AM item it's a public hearing consideration of a resolution approving resolutions and capital fire facility and equipment plans submitted by Lake County Fire Agencies and updating the Lake County Capital Fire Facility and Equipment Plan
thank you Mr Chair um once each year since October of nineteen ninety-two your board considers a resolution which adopts the resolutions of all of the five fire districts um for their um fees and also their capital fire facility and equipment plans and so this is the um annual uh opportunity to do that back in uh October of nineteen ninety-two you passed an ordinance number twenty-one fourteen that established this procedure it serves as the basis for the findings um that support each district's requested fire mitigation fees so it pertains to new construction and so have in your agenda packet are the resolutions of each of the five districts along with a resolution for the consideration of your board which um combines uh all of those resolutions in well combines the approval into one the um exhibit A to the resolution gives you some more detail in terms of what is included in each of the fire districts resolutions and so again this is an annual process your board takes up and it is staff's recommendation that you adopt the resolution approving resolutions and capital fire facility and equipment plans submitted by the Lake County Fire Agencies and updating the Lake County Capital Fire Facility and Equipment Plan
okay Carol thank you for that introduction all right uh any question from Supervisor Brown well I'm gonna start off you know this is it's really um I gotta start off by saying this first of all I think there's very few people on this board that probably have benefited from the fire department and working with them as much as I have I I appreciate them so much but what what I'm gonna say in the beginning of all if we'll remember we had an item on the agenda regarding fees that were coming up and what we were going to be how how we were gonna tie in um the fire department and I'm hoping that we do this with the schools as well as we talk about economic development and we've had these meetings the board has and one of the uh one of the entities uh or agencies the groups of agencies that haven't been there and involved in that discussion were the fire departments and the schools and so you know in brief the you know the the concept of you know us working on ways that we can attract businesses and and encourage development for the long-term benefit whether it be property taxes or job creation or or whatever um and i- in sacrifice maybe some of the short-term fees and expenses that we uh we could be charging as a county um but and I think we should involve the fire departments and the schools in that discussion I've always felt that you know the the all those agencies would benefit more um by by allowing development rather than you know you know raising fees on on the few that are developing I may be wrong on that but we haven't had the discussion with them for that so we need to look at those statistics so and I've you know supported the increases and and developer fees and all that but right now because of what we're going through and even prior to that you know we're talking about um you know we're having some serious discussions we're having one of the meetings this afternoon we're having another one special meeting next Tuesday and it's because we're trying to do the best we can to um to uh you know find ways to sustain this government not just give it a uh an injection a quick injection of the money that we can go buy things but ways that we can you know better provide services for the entire community for a long term and um and so you know I think this is bad timing to support these resolutions I'm not saying we shouldn't do it at some point but I don't think we should just do it as a rubber stamp as we have been for years and I like I said I've supported it too but I think we really need to have a a thoughtful discussion about any uh any agencies that that have fees attached to anything that we do we're collecting these fees uh well not the developer fees they're collecting those but we're collecting a lot of fees on behalf of the of the fire departments and the schools and so in the cities as well and we should have this conversation where we're all together on what it is uh that we're going to be doing to encourage economic development in the county I don't I think it's counterproductive for the county to have um discussions and we'll be wanting to make those sacrifices and then turn around let other agencies just raise fees because because they can I don't I think there really needs to be a thoughtful discussion with the public and uh and how that development can occur I think in the long term it would pay off for them but they you know they may disagree with that and I know they want an influx you know they like that influx of money and they use it you you know use it for equipment and and different things but we still need to have that discussion so that was the long way to get to I have a hard time supporting this resolution at this point for for these uh for the departments at this time thank you Supervisor Brown Supervisor Shabatier
uh so I actually approached Supervisor Brown just before uh this meeting or actually during our break when we were trying to take care of the technical difficulties and it seemed that we kinda had the same uh mindset on how do we think long-term versus short-term uh how do we uh work together because obviously um whatever we decide it impacts our fire districts uh whatever they decide impacts us uh we're we're a symbiotic uh group when it comes to taking care of our communities um I think that it it from everything I've read it doesn't show that there's any increases it's still a dollar square foot like it was before so I'm okay with approving what we have in front of us but I think that that conversation that Supervisor Brown started is absolutely a conversation we need to have number one how much money are we talking about per year uh how many homes are being developed whereas school fees are being paid and fire fees are being paid is there another way to take care of those fees so that somebody can be kept whole but then we can have more houses where we can collect more property tax which in the long term can benefit us in many more ways than none so I think that it absolutely needs to be a longer conversation uh and I absolutely believe that we also need to uh invite our schools and our fire districts to economic development conversations uh but at this moment in time because it's not an increase I'm okay with the approval uh but I absolutely agree with the uh further conversation as well and I look forward to this afternoon's conversation and intertwining some of these uh uh statements into those uh conversations
Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Crandall I don't know if you have any uh comments at this point we've seen any okay you know I thank you very much Bruno you know obviously yeah they are the same as last year there is no change or increase at this point but ultimately I think the long-term conversation definitely needs to happen we're all in this together uh and as people are building homes and moving here this is something needs to happen so um you know I am in support of what's coming up today there is no change or um uh you know it's not increasing the fees this year so I think uh as those conversations develop uh the fire departments are in the same mind they see and know what's going on
They see and know what's going on. I imagine they will engage in some good discussion to help our communities as we look for economic development opportunities in the future. So I'm in support to supporting the fire departments today. So, alright.
I do have a question on timing and maybe Anita could answer this. Is there, is there a reason that it has to be done today? That's, I guess that's my point more than anything. It's not, you know, there's, like you said, there's no increase to it, but at what point do we have the discussion before we actually move on, move forward with continuing to support these fees?
I can't see Anita's hand. Anita, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It took me a minute to find the little dots. The, this has to be done annually. I think the, the point here is largely twofold. You've got what Supervisor Sabatier said, which is here, it's not going to affect any increase. So it won't have any discernible effect on economic development. Going backward is not actually a choice for your board to attempt.
I don't want to do that, sure.
So, so at this point, I'd suggest that your, your desire to have these discussions with other taxing entities, with other independent local districts, can occur independent of that to try to see how, how you can affect the change economically that your board desires.
So I didn't, and I apologize, maybe I didn't make the question clear, but is there a deadline on it? You said annually, but I don't know what that.
That's annually. And so you can't, you can't let it go for very long because again, it has to be once a year. And I think you're probably, it doesn't say within a year, but it does have to be annually. But again, I'm not quite sure what the basis for the delay would be since nothing's changing.
Right, okay. And here's the thing, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to make a point at their expense. That's not, that's not the object here at all. So, you know, I don't mind, you know, supporting what they have right now. I still think there needs to be some changes. And, you know, we tend to just go along because things have worked out and all that. But things are really, really tough right now. They're going to get tougher. And so I think, I think I'd like to take a different approach for myself. And that is to support it because of the annual, annual need. I don't want to, I don't want to go backwards. That's not the intent at all. But what I would like to do is get a commitment from our board to ask them, encourage them to join us sooner than later to try to come up with, be active in our economic development discussion. Because they are, they are a huge part of it. There's no getting around that. So.
And certainly that's an appropriate request to make.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I think that just from my perspective, and I know that maybe we're getting off on the sidelines versus specifically this topic, but I think that if we, what I want to do is make sure that our fire departments remain whole. If it's $50,000 a year that they would be, that we're talking about for each department on development, which I'm just making up a number at this point in time because I don't know. I think that we would need to have that discussion on how do we make sure we don't take away that $50,000 as well. And I think those are the types of, knowing what that is and then having those discussions. So I think that no change is necessary, but absolutely in favor of that conversation to figure out how we can work together to make sure our future is a different place than what we have currently. Stagnation is not going to help us.
Yeah. Okay Supervisor Crandall or Supervisor Scott? I don't know if you have any comments, discussion at this point?
Just that I agree that, to bring this back for, for discussion to further understand all the numbers and everything.
Okay. Yeah, I'm definitely in agreement too and having those more in-depth conversations and making sure that they are involved with our economic development stuff as we move forward. So that's something we can put a request out and I know it will most likely be, you know, received very well. So we'll move through that process and at least have those conversations. I'm in agreement. So any more questions from the board? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this item up to the public. We're going to open up the public hearing.
So we don't have any hands raised, it looks like. Uh, yeah, so I can unmute the floor and we can continue with that. The floor is currently unmuted. If you would like to comment on this, please start by stating your first and last name.
Good. Alright Jake, go ahead and bring it back to the board. We'll bring it back to the board. We'll go and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Brown, go ahead.
I just wanted to know if this requires a resolu, each resolution be offered. I'm trying to open up on my computer here at the office, but it's been frozen for the entire time. So I don't think it's going to unfreeze.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes, go ahead Anita.
The only resolution the board is responsible for is the board resolution, which is your acceptance of all the resolutions of the individual fire district.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought, but I can't open up my, my backup packet for this because my computer's froze. So, so just, just the one resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll offer the resolution.
Okay Johanna, the resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move along on our agenda here. We're going to move to item 7.2. Consideration of a resolution, amending resolution number 2018-118 establishing temporary alternative office hours for county offices located in and surrounding the Lake County Courthouse for alternative direction to staff. Edmund Carroll, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, for the last year and a half or so, your board has authorized that certain county offices in the courthouse and surrounding the courthouse were allowed to be closed to the public on Fridays, although in most cases, staff is working inside those offices catching up on heavy workloads and coping with staffing shortages due to vacant positions. And so we've been bringing it forward to you every six months. You've been relooking at it and determining if it was appropriate to continue it. And the last discussion at the six-month interval we had with you was on March 10th, right before the COVID crisis seemed to sort of take over everything. And at that time, what your board approved was to extend it for a couple more months, but at the same time to check in with department heads to assess their readiness and ability to reopen to the public on Fridays. And then the COVID crisis struck and delayed our ability to, to move forward with, with that check-in to departments. And of course, everything changed with so many employees working remotely. So now we're getting back to that. We did check in with department heads and the majority indicated that, that they could reopen on Fridays with relative ease. However, more recently, your board also had some discussion about the possibility of budget cuts when we come back to consider the final budget in September. And so what I have before you today is two options to enable you to proceed. The first option enables resumption of normal business hours, which means reopening on Fridays starting the week of July 6th. So that would happen fairly immediately. And the second option would continue the Friday closures through October 9th. The point of that one being to get us past the point of consideration of the final recommended budget when, when we may have a better sense of the impacts of the COVID crisis and whether or not it's going to further affect staffing levels and departments' abilities to reopen. When we surveyed the department heads, we did not know that your board may want to look at reductions due to the COVID crisis. So staff's recommendation is that you consider the second option and forego changes to business hours until more is known about those impacts. But as always, we are receptive and willing to do as your board directs. And so that's what's in your agenda packet. And in addition, there's a memorandum from Richard Ford Assessor Recorder in which he discusses some of the special needs of his department. And so I wanted to call your attention to that as well.
Well Carol, thank you for putting this together. And obviously, we did have the discussion just before COVID-19 hit. So obviously, I want to have the discussion today as we move forward. Hopefully hope to, you know, support our departments that may have some unique challenges as we address this issue, but I'm glad you brought it back to the board and we get something decided here today for staff. So, you know, myself, I appreciate the recommendation of the October consideration date, but willing to go both ways as the discussion happens today. And ultimately, taking everything into account that has changed since we had the initial conversation. I know myself, I was excited to see us get back to Fridays. And then obviously, like I said, we had the pandemic hit and we're dealing with that now. So thank you very much, but I appreciate the, the recommendation. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. So I think that our primary job is customer service. I think that is exactly why government is here, is to help with whatever it is that our community members need, whether that's creating a project, opening up a business, dealing with code enforcement, whatever it is, I think our job is customer service. That's number one. And for us to be closed 20% of a five-day week is definitely something that, that, that is a little concerning as far as the availability of customer service. And I think that we need to look at reopening that Friday. And I don't think October is the right time. We're talking about economic development further on down in our agenda. And to be closed 20% of the time does not seem to me like that makes us completely 100% eligible for economic development purposes. We should be available when we should be available, which is Monday through Friday. Now, I recognize that that makes, creates some hardships for maybe specific departments. And I get it, four days a week, some people are only working four days a week. Some people use sick time on their fifth day. Some people are working every single day of the week, one day behind closed doors because it's not open to the public. There's a spectrum of ways that this is being treated. But I think that right now, especially in the wake of COVID-19, if we can spread out five days a week for our community members or those outside of the county coming in to work here, whether it's projects or whatever else they need our services for, if we can spread that out through the week, then we have less people in the building at the same time. If we can help maybe spread out our, allow our department heads to be flexible where certain, certain staff members work Monday through Thursday, the other staff members work Tuesday through Friday. Now we can help spread out how many people are in the same building at the same time, in the same offices, when we're trying to do the six-foot distancing. I think that by adding that fifth day, we add some really good potential flexibility to deal better with COVID-19. And we also make ourselves more available for customer service or economic development for making sure that people are getting the services that government is supposed to provide. I will say, I'm, I'm a little, what's the right word to use? I'm, I'm a little concerned that our last conversation was about opening up more. We spoke with the title companies, they requested more. And here we have a memo that says we're going to request less. And that, that just, that is the opposite of what we're asking to do. That is the opposite of what our community is asking to do. And I understand if somebody comes at 4:55 and they want something, that that's not possible. But to shrink the hours more so while we're having these conversations and, and we seem to have a consensus to try our best to enhance, increase the hours just seems to have a conflict. And so I want to see us do the best customer service we can to our community. And I think Monday through Thursday is not the best customer service that we can offer.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Crandall or Supervisor Brown?
So I, I agree with Bruno, maybe for some different reasons. When we first started this Friday off, it was because of staffing levels and trying to get caught up and not, not having the interaction with the public so much to take away from that opportunity on Friday to get caught up. And then, you know, like Bruno said, it became a day to take off and, not, not for everyone, but for some. But, but I got to say, if, you know, we just had three months worth of Fridays. And if we didn't get caught up then with no public interaction, we're never going to get caught up. So that should have worked. I know staffing levels are still an issue for many departments. They are better than they were when we had, when we went to the Fridays off, or Fridays, Friday closure. So, you know, I, I think it was a temporary program that some would want to be permanent. It was never intended to be permanent, but we're going to make it permanent. And I think going until October, I think everybody agrees or at least can, can see that there's a high likelihood that by October or November, we're going to be right back where we were. It's going to be rolling back around again. There's going to be some triggers. There's going to be some surges. There's going to be some concerns and we're going to be right back where we were. So we'll be back to closed for the public now. I think we take this opportunity to get open for the public. There's a lot of, lot of issues, a lot of projects that people want to get going. Let's get them through. Let's get them through before the next potential closure that's going to last for weeks or months. And I know there's going to be departments and, you know, Richard, you know, I've talked to him and he, you know, his staffing still is light and, and he's got a good reason for some, some closures. I don't agree with more closure. I think that that's, you know, we're really, we're really pushing it there. And there, but there are going to be some departments that can justify it. But this whole thing of letting everybody do it just because somebody needs it, I think is a, is, we're past that. Let's get, let's get back to open. Let's open it up when we can and get back to work and get the people taken care of before we have the possibility, the high probability of another closure.
Alright, thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Scott?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Supervisor Sabatier. We're supposed to be providing a customer service and being closed 20% of the time doesn't really work for that benefit. I know the reason why we did that is because we were down in our staffing levels. But I, I think this is the time to be open five days a week during the summer when we have projects coming in. So I would, I would like to see us try to open again up on Fridays to be able to get those projects moving, get our economic development moving and be able to provide that, that customer service that we need to provide.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Scott.
I, I do want to say one thing. I want to clear up one thing.
Go ahead Supervisor Brown.
I, I said we spent, you know, the last three months with Fridays of no interaction with public. And that's not accurate. There was minimal, it was reduced significantly, but there were a lot of departments that were finding ways to make it work for the public. It wasn't the same and the public did have some frustrations, but we, we did have some departments that were going out of their way to try to figure out some, some way to make it work. So I do appreciate that, but it definitely wasn't the same as, as face-to-face dropping off plans, contacts, things like that, issues taken care of. So that was, that was my point.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so, so yeah, I agree with, you know, the majority of the statements so far. I'm also willing to look at, you know, sun, or, you know, we call that sunrise and sunset date. So if we need to allow the departments to adjust a little bit, like let's say mid-July or something, I'm willing to discuss that. Or even if it looks like the board is willing to open right away, so we're not looking at the October deadline. So, but if we're willing, I mean, we need to discuss possibly given a couple of weeks. Because I do know that they have a work policy in place that specifies that some people can work at home, some people can work, you know, remotely, things like that. And they need to adjust that to get people prepared. Or, you know, I know they've had a lot of time to prepare, but at the same time, some people took vacation, some people were working at home, some people just opted out. So I'm just willing to accommodate, but either way, I do agree that we should be open. So.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
And just one last thing. Thank you. I think that it should be up to each department what that Friday opening looks like. I very much so want to at least see a face that the public can see, that they can interact with. But that doesn't mean you have to offer the whole gamut of services on a Friday. It could be a skeletal crew, but at least you can submit your paperwork. At least you can put in your question and your request. Right now, it's, it's a closed door, which is kind of unfortunate because the courthouse is open. And so people walk in thinking it's open, they go upstairs and all of a sudden, it's a closed door. And so if there's at least that ability to interact with somebody where next week we'll get you what you need or thank you for submitting your update to your project, whatever it might be, at least that's available. So I'm willing to be flexible, but I definitely am looking. So I'm willing to be flexible, but I definitely am looking for Fridays to be open.
Okay. All right, any more comments from the board? All right, see you none. We're going to go ahead and open it up to the floor. And I know we have department heads and other folks that are in the room. So Jake, I don't see any hand up, so we'll go ahead and open up the floor.
All right, I will open up the floor here. The floor has been unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Yeah, I see Jan Kopinger. Jan, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I, I understand everything you're all saying and I agree with that. But I just wanted to point out that during the last few months, Special Districts does have drop boxes and we do meet with people on Fridays when they need to. And we've, you know, made that all possible. We just more or less close to making payments over the counter. But I have been more productive in the last few months because Fridays are the one day I can actually dive in for eight hours and read a 180-page funding agreement or the bid docs that are just multiple pages. You can't do that in blocks of hours. And I think we all are so understaffed that the department head has to kind of have a hand on everything. And, and you have a limit. But I got to say, not happening to run out to the counter on Fridays to, you know, maybe resolve a question or a dispute has been more productive for this department. We have about $33 million in grant apps out there that are working their way through the system. And this would not have happened without this. So I do understand you, you are concerned about customer service. And I really think that is our number one objective, but productivity is also very important. And I just wanted to throw that out there so you don't think that we're all just using this time to relax. Because I can guarantee you, we're not. And we do, when people say the only time I can make it is on a Friday, we meet them and we do what we need to. My construction meetings were always on Friday. We use that time very productively. And we made sure that our customers could reach us. We have emails out, we have Facebook, we have phones that they can call in on. And we have a Dropbox and we have electronic payments. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out that the productivity of the last few months has to be recognized because I guarantee you it could not, we wouldn't have had half of this completed without those Friday closures. But thank you for any consideration that you do give to this.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, I can't see the next names, but go ahead Jake, who's up next?
Yeah, the, the next person we have up here, oops, that one, is, we have Scott DeLeon.
Go ahead Scott.
Let's see if I can find it right here. I, I sent you an unmute, Scott?
Yep, I got it, thank you. Good morning, Board. Well, I'm going to not, well, I'm going to echo a number of the things that Jan said. But I'm also going to provide a couple of clarifications. The departments that I manage on the third floor have not used the Friday closures as an opportunity for three-day weekends. The staff has been here working diligently in all three departments. And we have utilized those Friday closures to the best of our ability, taking into account the issues with COVID-19, working remotely and all of the challenges that we've, we've faced to try to remain open and to try to keep projects moving and keep business as usual here for the folks in Lake County. And I think that we've done a pretty good job of that. The Supervisor Brown made a comment that, that, you know, if we haven't got caught up by now, we're never going to. And perhaps that's an indication of the start of my presentation on, at 1:00 regarding economic development. And I'm going to tell you right now that we aren't caught up. We have a backlog of, of 100 projects here. And, and again, that's, that is despite the efforts of staff to, to, to do the best they can and work five days a week. We utilize that, that fifth day closure for a number of things. It's, it's very helpful to us to get some uninterrupted time. We do have a Dropbox or we utilize the Dropbox downstairs on the first floor. And throughout the courthouse closure, we have made different efforts to, to communicate and interact with the public and able to drop their plans off. We do, if someone wants to make an appointment for a Friday, we do honor those appointments. We just aren't open to somebody that, that happens to walk in. Although I can tell you that oftentimes we've found people that are in the courthouse, they've driven from out of the area to talk to somebody and, and we'll go ahead and, and talk with them. Because I agree, customer service is our, our number one priority. And, and that is a, something that I, I drive home with all the departments here. We utilize the Friday closure. We will do whatever your board desires for us to do. And, but recognize that we, we are not, we are not caught up. And we're, we're going to continue to struggle with trying to get projects done. I don't think it's so much of a staffing issue because we've got some great people here. We've filled some, some positions recently. And we're trying desperately to get them up to speed, which by the way, the Friday closure helps us with because we do training with our, with our staff on Friday. So again, the third floor will do whatever the board decides. And, and, but recognize, or just, I just want you to be aware that we do value that, that closure on that fifth day and get a lot done. So thank you for your time.
Supervisor Brown?
So I need further clarification for my comments. I'm not, what I said was not meant to be a criticism. It was meant to be just an observation that we, we originally started this so, so departments could get caught up. If we're not caught up after this last three months, then we're not going to get caught up. And that doesn't mean they're not trying. It just means, why do we keep pretending that we're going to ever get caught up by having Fridays off? Let's just make it a thing instead of, instead of, you know, doing it part-time or, or temporary and all that. Let's just say, that's what we need, that's what we need to do. That way the public can count on it instead of, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. That's my point, that there are departments that absolutely have to have that no matter what, whether you're fully staffed or not. So why don't we just have that discussion? Instead of, you know, kicking it down the road a little further each time and, you know, make, make it a permanent option available. I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that we should do that, but we should with some departments maybe. But I, I don't want anybody to think that I'm being critical of a department that is working a lot. And I know, you know, Scott's department and, and, you know, there's going to be several of them, but Scott's department for sure has, has used whatever time they have valuable, valuably, as efficiently as they can. And, but it's not going to change. So, you know, if we, if we take away the Fridays or we give them more Fridays, if we give them a Thursday and a Friday, it's still going to be a backlog. So let's just, let's just figure it out and, and move on.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. We have Galaxy J7 Crown, that's what I have up here next, I don't know who that is, go ahead.
Yeah, all right. Galaxy J7, I sent you an unmute request here, you should be able to unmute yourself. Can you give me your first and last name and a sound check?
Linda Rushing.
All right, I can hear you Linda.
Okay, hi, and I want to say thank you to everyone here. I really, I used to work for Alameda County Social Services and Healthcare and Administrative Positions. And we did, we did do flex time on Fridays or Mondays with our staffing so that we could get caught up and so that we could meet and greet the public, like, like you're saying. And I, I really agree. We do need to open up and have a face there to, to take in the paperwork. But they do need the Fridays off or maybe work part-time on a Friday, maybe change the hours to in the evenings so people that can't get there during the day. There's so many ideas and I'm so grateful to you all for being open to them and just for listening. Because I worked for administration for Alameda County. I have tenure and I just want to help. So if there's any way I can help, I have ideas and I'd love to pitch them. So thank you for your time and for everything, and especially during these very difficult times. It's, and I, I'm having trouble speaking because I have multiple sclerosis. But I just want to say I'm so grateful to you all, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Jake, I don't see any other hands up at this point. Go ahead and open the room Jake, and then we'll bring it back.
Okay, all right, I'll open up the room once more here. The floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name. I do have a, a comment here from Scott DeLeon.
Do you want to open Scott back up so we can make a comment?
I was just asking Jake to unmute me, but he's done that. No, I, I'm fine. We're, Supervisor Brown, I appreciate the clarification. And, and that's exactly how I interpreted your comments. I, I didn't interpret them or take them in any, any other manner other than, you know, if, if we're not caught up now, we're not going to be. And that's exactly my point. So I, I, I appreciate your clarification.
All right, it, it does look like we have a couple of hands popping up here now. So I will call on the first hand that I have on the list, I have Frank.
Okay Frank, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Hi, I just, just want to make a comment as a member of the public that it is very difficult sometimes. There has been things that I've wanted to get done. And then you have that dreadful day, work of the week where you, where you try to call in or try to go down there and get something done and you do have that closed door. You know, it would be nice for me, you know, I work for a company, it would be nice for me just to, I wish I had a Friday off where I just was able to get caught up. But I don't because I, you know, I work for a company that serves the public. So anyways, I do think it's important to be open on Fridays. You know, I understand everyone wanting to get, you know, I guess caught up or whatever. But, you know, we live in a world where, you know, things have to get done. Thank you.
Do we have a second comment there from, it's the second hand up Jake?
Yeah, I think that hand did come down. So I'll try calling on Galaxy J7 here again. I believe that was Linda?
Yeah, I think I saw it disappear.
It did go down and I requested the unmute, it doesn't look like it's coming through.
I think she was completed, all right. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment at this point and bring it back to the board. For Directions. And, you know, I just, yeah, absolutely. I would just want to thank, you know, all the department heads and everything weighing in on this as far as, you know, how they were using the valuable time on Fridays. You know, I know that, you know, they were doing everything they could to work diligently and, you know, make positive strides forward. And ultimately, COVID-19 just threw a whole wrench too, while we're in the middle of these things. So just want to make sure, you know, that we're having good quality conversations as we move forward. And, you know, just make sure the public understands that, you know, ultimately, no one was using it as Fridays off, they were using to get caught up or to do training. We had reports that it came back to that effect. And, you know, I just want to thank all the departments for working with us in whatever direction we take here. I know that as always, our workforce will step up and do everything they need to do, whatever direction we take. So thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, and I, I want to say that I thank you to Director Kopinger and Director DeLeon. I think that some of our directors, because of the type of work that they do and the type of interactions that they have with the public, have definitely already taken steps to be more accessible on Fridays. So we, we kind of have a very large spectrum of how Friday is dealt with depending on the type of work and the departments that we have. Again, I just want to, my consensus that I would be looking for to provide to our department heads is just a face. It doesn't have to be the entire 100% workload available to the public, but at least a face that you can interact with, provide a statement, provide documentation, just something a bit more of a, of a personal touch to that interaction to make sure that whoever's walking in can feel like we're here for you. But I understand that we still always is not up. We're, we're not looking at increasing our staffing at this moment in time. Hopefully, with the further conversation of economic development, that can create more staff to be more available. But that's all I'm looking for is that face that you could walk in and interact with. And hopefully, they can find a way to make that happen. And I'd love for this conversation to continue so we can see how that is working out for our departments, rather than us providing a change in order and then walking away thinking everything's great.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Brown, then I'll go to Supervisor Scott.
So Carol, so what, I know it's been difficult because of the Zoom and everything, but have you, have you guys met with department heads and gone over what, what originally was proposed and how we got to where we are, where we are right now and all that? Is that something that's been done or is it just send out a survey and put them together?
We, we sent out a survey and we have not met with them one-on-one. But as you've heard, most departments are willing to do what your board directs. But, but some of them.
Okay. And I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate that. What I'm, I don't have the ability to give direction without, you know, good, a good discussion from those folks that are actually working. It's easy for, for me or us to say, this is what I perceive, this is what, this is what I think. We're not here every day, we're not in those departments every day. The department heads are, the employees are, and, and I don't, you know, this is challenging because you can't meet, you can't get around the table like you usually do with your department head meetings. Hopefully soon you can. But I, I think, you know, that face-to-face meeting is critical. And I think it's more spontaneous and candid than a survey. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable taking any action at all just based on the perspective I have as opposed to waiting until we get a thoughtful representation of the departments, which ultimately come from the employees.
Thank you Rob, Supervisor Scott?
Yeah, I know staff brought back the recommendation to continue staying closed on Friday. You know, you said you sent out surveys Carol. How many department heads responded to those surveys saying that the closures on Fridays would benefit their department or continue to benefit the department?
Well, the general responses were that if the board directs departments to reopen, they will reopen. But they, but the majority of departments also talked about the benefits of the continued closures. And one thing that's been said here a couple of times is people have referred to this as a day off. It hasn't been a day off. I, I don't mean supervisors, but I heard a comment about it being a day off, it'd be nice to have a day off. People have been in their offices working. So yeah, to go back to the options I gave you, the first option would reopen on Fridays starting July 6, the week of July 6 anyway. And the second would continue it through October 9th, which would get us on the other side of final budget hearings. Honestly, I, I think the departments are very candid in their survey responses. We've been gathering a lot of information from them via surveys lately, not just COVID, but because we seem to need a lot of information. But that would, if, if you chose the second option, it would certainly afford us an opportunity to discuss it with the whole group at the department head meeting. And of course, the chair would be present and one other supervisor as well.
Supervisor Crandall?
Is this something we can talk about this afternoon in the workshop with economic development? Or is it strictly about economic development? I mean, I think that it ties in. And that way, we can possibly push this till next week and then make the decision? Or do we have to make a decision today?
This afternoon, you will only have five, I believe, five departments represented. You won't have them all.
Okay, sorry.
They're, they're grouped into four different economic development workshops.
Okay, I'm just looking at the different avenues to allow, you know, the directors and the departments to kind of schedule, you know, on their own. Like I think the approach of having a face there is great, but also saying, you know, we're taking, you know, let me take your application or let me take your issue and let's set an appointment for you on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, however. But, but ironing that out would be important for me rather than, than. that out would be important for me rather than, than uh, you know, um, just going forward. Cause I, I, I do know that uh, it is very important to have that work in office day, especially um, with, with grants. Um, when you're working in a flow of certain things and you get interrupted, it gets very difficult. Um, and I know that the, the, some of those projects in community development are, you know, hundreds of pages. And so you're, you're working tediously on those types of things, but um, if we can figure out a way to manage that, I do like the idea that the public comment um, of Mrs. Russian who stated that she would be willing to, you know, give some ideas. I, I like that. I, I, I'm looking at, I'd like to look at new ways to give them also discretion so they feel like they make the decision and we're not just making it for them. We do want to serve the public, but at the same time, we want to make sure that they feel like they're um, you know, having a say in it and ensuring that they're productive as well. And I, and I think they are productive. I just, I just know that um, it's all just been a real difficult situation to, to navigate through. Um, and I went up yesterday and met with the community development about something and, and, and they're, yeah, it, it's, I just would like to uh, you know, do a little more uh, discussion with them to have, to have a, a better idea of what we should do.
Okay, so uh, was brought to us today on our agenda today. We have a, you know, a couple of uh, different options here that were brought. One, uh, we opened up on July 6th. The other is that we take more time uh, and move it to the October date and um, you know, what, what is the, you know, obviously I've made my point clear. Um, just trying to clarify with everyone else. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I'll just ask for it. I'm looking for consensus to uh, reopen on Fridays as of July 6th and uh, affording directors of each department um, the ability to do a bare bones opening on Friday or a full-blown opening on Friday, uh, whatever uh, fits for their department. Um, I think that if we ever uh, just going back to the being caught up, if we're ever caught up, then that's a problem. We need to always have something to do. We need to always have a project to work on. Um, uh, so that, that part I don't think ever happens. And I just saw, uh, I don't know if uh, Sheriff Martin popped into the meeting or if he just popped in on my screen, but it's not like we can give our police officers a day off so they can just write reports. Uh, it's important for them to be out there on the streets and it's important for us to be there for the public as well uh, as doing the work that's happening behind closed doors. Uh, I'm willing to be flexible and that's what I'm offering and looking to see if there's a consensus uh, for that.
Well, uh, Sheriff, if uh, yeah, uh, so we'll go ahead and reopen then uh, the comment, um, comments. So uh, Sheriff Martin, Martin can make a comment. Uh, go ahead Sheriff.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Um, as, as you all know, the Sheriff's Department obviously can't do uh, Friday closures to the public. We have to continue our services and we've been doing so. Uh, but what I will say is uh, with the county maintaining a 20% vacancy rate, uh, it's, it should come as no surprise that departments are backed up on their projects. So uh, giving that, that one day off for departments to catch up on, if I was able to take care, advantage of that and do some catching up on, on investigations and reports and civil process and um, uh, death investigations, all that, I would certainly um, take advantage of it. Unfortunately, I can't. Um, you, you, the board and the public uh, expects and demands a lot from uh, from staff. Uh, but like I say, with that 20% vacancy rating, it's um, we're continually being asked to do more with less and um, I, I certainly appreciate the benefit uh, for my fellow department heads that are able to get that, that catching up done on Fridays. Um, as I also echo what uh, um, the CAO said, it's not a day off. They're, they're using it to catch up on work. Uh, and um, it's, you know, it's like swimming upstream. I, you know, I don't know if they're going to make it, but it certainly helps. And they'll just get pushed farther downstream, I think if uh, uh, if they're opening back up. As far as having just a face available, inevitably that one person's going to get tied up with something when somebody comes in and it's going to turn into uh, more and more people in the department being uh, taken away from the work that they had intended to do on those Fridays. So um, it's, it's a, it's definitely a balancing act that the board's going to have to make between um, you know, allowing their employees to get the work done uh, that they need to do uh, or becoming further overwhelmed.
Thank you Sheriff Martin.
Thank you.
You know, I think um, you know, obviously, you know, and I, and I do think Rob hit it on the head. You only talk about it, you know, either we're going to be closed Fridays and that's a, uh, maybe a permanent conversation that we have or we're going to be open. So um, you know, I think it could be something that could be beneficial down the road. I know that there are municipalities and uh, governments that do it, but um, that is not on the agenda today. So uh, go ahead Supervisor Scott.
You know, I would like to hear from departments if what Supervisor Sabatier is saying would work for their department, just to have a face. Is that something that would actually work for their department, not have a full-blown um, staff being present for the public? Uh, so I, I would really like to give this more time to be able to hear back from our, our departments. I, 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 I hear the ones that, that talked and said that this, this is helpful for their, um, you know, to get projects um, moving forward. So I would hate to, to damper that because you know, it really goes both ways. We want economic development, but if we're unable to, you know, get our projects out, then we're slowing down. So really what is, is the best way to go about this? So I, I really would like to hear um, more from our department heads and, and I appreciate they say that they'll do whatever we, you know, ask them to do, but I want to know what is best for their department, not just they will do what we, what we want them to do.
Yeah.
So Mr. Chair, we can definitely, we can definitely continue that dialogue at the department head meeting. The quarterly department head meeting comes up in a few weeks. Um, would be happy to do that, but if, if that's the um, consensus, then we do need your board to approve another extension of the Friday closures.
Can we do, can we do that today?
Can you?
Or would that have to come back?
Yeah, that would be.
Proven extension.
It would be the resolution number, uh, the, the second option. You can change the date to anything you want. Right now the way the second option is written, it's through October 9th. It could be any date you want it to be.
Okay. Alright. I did see um, uh, Lars Ewing. I, I did see Lars put his hand up. I don't know, uh, when he asked the question, I thought Lars. There you go Lars.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you. So I don't want to belabor the, the discussion too much, but um, I, I, I appreciate um, the, the consideration for the uh, the department latitude. Um, I, I, I think that is a, it would seem reasonable at, on, at least for public services. We do not have the, the foot traffic um, in, in our office. Uh, plus we are similar um, to some extent to the, uh, to the sheriff's office in the sense that we are um, we are doing seven days a week or in some cases six day a week operations uh, in, in for field staff. So I, I think a recognition needs to be made that this um, uh, whatever approach is taken, it, it's not um, it's not an impact to 100% of uh, of, of county employees. In fact, I, I would say it's, it's uh, it's probably very few. Um, uh, it, it is certainly the, the face of, of many departments, but um, but I, if I were to consider the, the latitude of um, providing whatever level of service we can, the maximum level of service we can on a Friday, um, I, I think for, for public services, that is certainly something that, that we can easily do. Um, but I, I also need to foot stomp that that is in a, um, you know, not grand central station um, like the courthouse is. Thank you.
Thank you Lars. I see you have another hand up. Denise? Denise Palmer?
Hi, your board. Um, yeah, I just want to echo what the other department heads have said. The health department um, has always been open till noon on Friday, even with the Friday closures. Um, to allow for people to come in and, and, and get things they need, but that half day in the afternoon really allows staff to get caught up. You know, we're uh, you know, program funded department. We have, you know, 50 something programs that we do, writing the reports, um, getting the, you know, that work done, that, the desk work done is really important. Um, and that allowed us to do that during that time period. So I agree, I will do whatever your board recommends, but um, that Friday afternoon off has helped us to have staff meetings, trainings, um, things that we just could not get done during the normal work week. Thank you.
Thank you very much department heads, uh, Denise and Lars, um, and all the other ones that have spoken. So uh, I guess there would be a question. Um, would there be an appetite for uh, this board to uh, change a date on the uh, resolution? Uh, to give maybe another month? Um, and then be brought back to talk so we could get some more information? That would be I, I think a compromise uh, to move forward with this discussion a little more. Bruno?
And just to clarify, the more information is based on the uh, idea of the flexibility on Friday. Uh, cause obviously as Ms. Hutchinson told us, uh, she got very candid responses from each department head on uh, Friday's opening and how it would have impacted them. This would be a discussion on what does flexible Friday look like and is it feasible? Is that, is that what we're looking at?
Well, I would think that uh, it would, it would be a meeting conferring with uh, our department heads as we always do, just like Carol laid out, uh, that myself and uh, one other board member would, we'd convene a department head meeting and we'd have uh, more in-depth discussion on how we're moving forward with this um, with the Friday closures and uh, what that looks like. Uh, you know, uh, Carol, you can elaborate on that if you want, but I thought that's what we were um, you know, considering anyway.
That's it. And um, I just was looking at that um, July department head meeting and that one is, of course, the chair is always present and it's Supervisor Brown's um, turn to be present at the department head meeting. If he's available, we appreciate him because he has a long range.
He likes additional meetings.
I know he does.
Yeah, yeah. What's the, what's the date on that Carol?
It's uh, July 16th at 10 a.m.
Okay. No, I would, I would love to go to that, to be at that. I, I really have a deep appreciation for our department heads and I don't consider that a meeting. I consider that an honor.
Great. We'll look forward to it.
So they might disagree, but.
Again, if you, if you approve some extension on some level to get us uh, past that time, um, it could be October 9th as written or some other date.
Didn't you say something about 30 days, Chair Simon?
I was just suggesting, I was just looking at calendar dates. Uh, July, we meet on the 7th, 14th, 21st, 28th. Just thought it would give time to either the, you know, the 28th or, or so, uh, you know, just so you can put everything together, but uh, that was just a consideration. Ultimately, the board or anybody who wants to make a motion can come up with a, a different date at that point. So.
So Mr. Chair, if I could just add a comment. So if we
Yeah.
speak to the department heads on the 16th, we need, we'll need a little time to um, you know, prepare the recommendations. So if you would consider August 4th, that would probably be just about perfect.
Okay.
So maybe put a, a deadline date saying by August 7th, which is that Friday. That way it's not just a deadline on the day we're having the discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, so then the first reopening on a Friday, if you decide to reopen on Fridays would be you're, you would want it to be the 7th or the 14th?
I'd say the 14th so they can prepare. That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. Alright, so then uh, I think all we need to do with the date change is someone to uh, offer the uh, we offering resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Quick question?
Yes.
Is uh, offering the resolution option two or option one? Is it option two automatically?
It's option two with a change in date to um, the clo- the Friday closures through August 7th, 2020.
Thank you.
Okay. So that amendment would change, the, the resolution has been offered. We do roll call?
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
I apologize. I lost my.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes, just give me one second here. I lost my agenda.
I, I wanted to help you. Wondering if we can maybe take a five-minute break since we've been at it for two hours?
Okay. Yeah, I, I definitely, uh, let's take a uh, five-minute break here and then we'll come right back to our agenda and we will be on item um, 7.3. Okay.
At 11:15?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
11:15, that's fine. Okay. Alright, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting at uh, 11:17 or so, I think, 11:18. So reconvene the June 23rd meeting. Um, uh, on our agenda items, we are on agenda item number 7.3, uh, demonstration of a virtual uh, in-person hybrid uh, approach to the board or supervisors meetings. Uh, go ahead Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, um, staff has been working hard to develop a solution for you, which will bring together the Zoom technology and also allow um, people to be back in the boardroom. And in fact, the first meeting that that's going to take place will be next week at your special meeting in the afternoon starting at 1. Um, this is really an innovative approach and I'm really pleased to be able to work with the team to develop this. And of course, in addition to the merging of Zoom and in-person, um, the, of course, we'll still broadcast on Granicus and on Facebook for people that just want to watch. Um, so I, I think I heard it stated best in one of your earlier discussions when we were talking about the melding of the processes and one of you made the comment that um, it's what people feel comfortable with that they should do in terms of managing their own needs through this COVID crisis. And this option that staff's gonna present to you does just that. So um, we have remodeled the boardroom to the extent that there are now sneeze guards all around where board and board staff sit in the room and at the public, uh, the public's podium, when the public speaks, we've removed the stationary seating in there and we'll have seating that's just arranged loosely in the room. So there should be a capacity of about 25 people uh, in there, not including uh, the board and staff, once you start meeting back in there. But again, it just gives the option for what people are most comfortable with because there can be full participation either way, by Zoom or in person. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jake and Sam uh, to show you what it looks like.
Alright, hello. So, um, I'm going to turn this on real quick here, just so you guys can see kind of a camera we have set up in the room. Alright, so you should have seen uh, the County of Lake Board Supervisor Chamber camera kind of turn on. Um, I'm going to, let's see, it can go like this. Let's fall like that. So, this will be the Zoom side of things. But just a quick explanation here. Uh, in light of the current pandemic, we have created what we are calling a hybrid Zoom environment that we fully incorporate the use of both County of Lake's Board of Supervisors Chamber Room and Zoom's virtual meeting space. This hybrid setup will allow seamless communication between the board and all other participants. In the boardroom, you'll be able to hear any board members or staff member who presents. Uh, you will also be able to view Zoom participants via Zoom uh, projection screen and um, communicate verbally with them via uh, any microphone set up in the boardroom. As a Zoom participant, uh, whether you be staff or public, you will have a view of the boarder chamber room um, as you see on your screen now, and two-way communication with board and all staff presence in the chamber room. Uh, so as you see now, this is the, the, the camera that we have set up in the chamber room uh, for Zoom. Um, Sam has set up the hardware for people to be able to uh, communicate from the boardroom and relay that into Zoom and as well as for that Zoom audio to come in and broadcast over the, the PA in the chamber room. Um, so this is something that I think there's a couple of kinks still to work out, but it's pretty much ready for um, for use. I think there's just one more thing with the audio. Uh, the, which other screen? I'm sorry. Uh, I can't grab Granicus. Um, let's see, I can. Let's see, we can't do this. This always works out really, really, really good. Okay, so I'm going to hold my phone into the camera right there. Now you kind of see that. Ooh, alright, so uh, this is a little too hot. Alright, I can do this somewhere else. Uh, but we do have a screen set up that will. Uh, but we do have a screen setup that will, uh, display out to Granicus and Facebook. And that will kind of show everything that's, that's available. You're going to get hit with the cameras from the boardroom and you're going to be able to see the, the Zoom participants too. So if we have a board member who, uh, doesn't want to be in the physical in the board chamber room, they could join us via Zoom and still have that spotlight available.
Okay Supervisor Sabatier?
Um, so I, I appreciate staff working on making this happen. And just for clarification, I believe I understood a hundred percent uh, that the Zoom, the, the, what we are typically looking at right now these days on our computer screens would be on the overhead projector so that we can see who's actively in the meeting that's, uh, on Zoom. I would also assume that if we're doing a presentation, uh, that it would do a share screen uh, from our computer in the boardroom so that the presentation can be front and center. And then Zoom would be on the side, uh, typical like what we've been doing here when we do a share screen presentation. Is that correct as well? Cause I know we utilize the overhead a whole lot, uh, during our meetings for presentations, uh, updates and whatever else that we have going on. Just wanted to check in and see if that would be the case.
Yeah. So that, that will still hold true. Uh, that projector screen is, uh, during this setup, it will be the, the main, uh, video source for, uh, people physically present to see Zoom. Um, and as long, so if, if someone is physically there to present, um, we can do that presentation over Zoom still. And, you know, the person doing the presentation is going to see it also. Uh, so you would still be able to see the presentation being physically present and then that will, uh, broadcast over Zoom as well. And then directly to Granicus and Facebook.
So I appreciate that. Thank you. And, uh, I think it looks, it's a, a little awkward, uh, but at the same time, it, uh, it's, it's definitely the hybrid, uh, style that we asked. Um, i- i- it's not here and now, but I am concerned about, um, the future. Uh, cause I do want to make sure that we keep providing something on Facebook. I would love to keep providing something available to Zoom where people who aren't mobile, people who are working can take five minutes out of their time to be able to talk to us during our meeting. I think it's important to have that accessibility, but I'm concerned and, and, and I'm, I'm going to put Jake in a very hot seat here. I'm concerned how much we're utilizing IT for our meetings in comparison to before. Uh, so that's, that's just, uh, me expressing my concern of the cost of our meetings compared to what it used to be in the past. Uh, and I'm sure that Jake being part of our meetings, while I absolutely appreciate Jake, maybe that's taken away from IT's ability to take care of other IT issues as well. Uh, so I just wanted to put that out there for us to keep track of as we keep moving. Cause, um, it's, it's, it's wonderful what we have, but is it sustainable for the long-term future? Uh, how do we make it sustainable?
And that would probably be a better conversation with Shane French, the department head for IT. And in fact, uh, Matthew Rothstein and I were, um, just having that conversation recently that it is, that it is time to check in Shane and, um, get a better sense of how this is impacting the workload of IT.
And, and the reason I bring it up is because as we ta- talked about in planning commission, something went haywire. While if we keep utilizing Zoom, that potential is still there, uh, as we move into the future. So we need to have an, uh, availability of controlling the room, uh, if we're going to continue with it.
So there's, and that's, that's kind of like the, the issue with this is, uh, it's, I, I personally see it as sort of a requirement that we have somebody, uh, capable of kind of overseeing any meeting that goes, especially if they go public. Um, and kind of being able to control it. I mean, that's, say what you will about the past meetings, we're, we're, we're working here. We're getting better and control is definitely, uh, growing. Um, and just not having somebody that knows the ropes doing it would be, um, uh, could be a, yeah, can be a difficulty. And, um, I mean, I, I, I'm doing it because I just stepped up to do it. So, um, if there's someone else that wants to do and wants to be trained for it, then we could totally go it that way too.
Thank you.
I, I do think someone needs to do it.
Okay. Supervisor Scott?
Um, yes, you know, I, I'd like to apologize for Marty. I went back and looked at my emails and, um, I didn't respond to her email. I didn't see it somehow. Um, but actually the question is for Jake. So since I have him here, her question is that, um, she keeps getting disconnected from Zoom and she's concerned that, um, it's an overwhelming volume of people. So is that an issue that we have or, you know, what's the issue of being kicked off of Zoom? How does that happen?
I would expect that to be more so with her, her network. Uh, maybe it can't handle the workload that Zoom actually requires. Um, it could be, uh, her device and it could be any number of reasons. Uh, but I would suspect local, her, her, her direct environment first. I, and we do get, I do see some people experiencing issues with Zoom, especially like the waiting room. Uh, some people kind of have trouble joining and they, they, I, I see them try to join and they won't. And then they'll pop back into the waiting room and then I'll let them in and then, you know, kind of that cycle repeats. Uh, so there's definitely some little issues there with, uh, getting people into the, the Zoom room.
Yeah. I know for myself, I have issues sometimes. Even this morning, it's been three times where I have frozen up and it's because my internet, it comes on saying it's, it's unstable. Um, what, what is our, how many people can we have on this Zoom?
So we, I, I believe the limit is up to 300 participants. Um, it, it starts to get rocky for some people after, uh, I think we've had discussions that that number is as low as 60. Um, personally, I don't notice any bandwidth issues or connection issues. I'm also the host. So, uh, I think I'm kind of under a different detail than everyone else.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Crandall, did you have a, your comment?
No, I, I just stated a, you know, a while back that, um, you know, I, I, when we do come back to the board, uh, chambers um, in the DIA side, you, you like the fact that we're looking to continue allowing other folks the opportunity to call in or be in or whatever the case may be. Um, just considering the fact that there's times when they're not able to come to the board chambers and actually give a presentation. Um, it's good that we're using this as a segue to kind of move forward with technology. And I appreciate all the work that, uh, has been done to do this. And, uh, I, I think it's just good for the constituency. So, um, that's all I wanted to add.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. My last comment will be, I did, uh, join the meeting. I was able to get on and look at what we were going to be doing. So I want to appreciate all the hard work Mad Men and IT. And, uh, next week we will, uh, kind of roll this thing out to the public and work through any issues that come up. And we do know there will be issues and, uh, we'll just work them out as we go. But, uh, uh, having it open to the public on different forms, I think is just a great step forward for Lake County, especially here with our government. We always talk about transparency and involvement and, uh, this is just one more step to, uh, increase that. Um, I, it was pretty much discussion today. So, uh, if there's no more discussion from the board, I'll open it up to the public and then, uh, we'll bring it back. Okay. So go ahead and open up the room, Jake.
All right. So it doesn't look like we have any hands up here. Uh, so let's, I will unmute the floor here. The floor is unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment, please start by stating your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, close down and bring it back to the board.
All right.
And like you said, this was, uh, there's really no action to be taken today, just a discussion item and a presentation. Uh, once again, thank you guys for all the hard work and, uh, we'll see on the 30th, uh, our, our new reality. Um, so thank you, everyone. Uh, we'll go ahead. Yep. Jake, Sam, IT, you know, everybody who's, uh, put in on this and it is, um, working out the issues is very important. So, uh, go ahead. We're going to move on to item 7.4, uh, a report from County Space Committee, Space Use Committee regarding the use of County Juvenile Hall Facility for a temporary support shelter targeting Lake County's chronically homeless population. Uh, Carol, I don't know if you want to start this conversation?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I wanted to ask Jake if he can change the view or do we need to do something to change our view?
Uh, yes. So I, uh, I turned off the spotlight here, but you have to go back to gallery.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay. Um, so as your board knows, I, um, I am the convener of the County Space Committee. Your board appoints two board members, members to serve on the space committee and they are Supervisor Brown and Chairman Simon. And, um, and the additional people on the space committee are certainly, um, Lars Hewing and Bob Allen and myself. And, and then Matthew Rothstein, uh, supports our efforts with scheduling and note taking and all that good stuff. And the space committee kind of meets on an as-needed basis, uh, when there, uh, is some space to talk about. And so we met last week to talk about the use of the juvenile hall facility as a temporary support shelter. And, um, I'm sure that the two supervisors will want to, uh, offer some comments. But, but essentially what our discussion boiled down to was that the space committee is recommending, um, that that use be temporary at this point to, uh, allow a broader discussion about the long-term use of the facility.
Thank you for that update, Carol. Uh, any, uh, any discussion from the board at this point? Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I would say that, um, that seems appropriate for the moment because we are definitely moving fast. Uh, but I appreciate the fact that the space committee has, uh, is willing to allow for emergency use. That way we can, uh, fine tune and figure out exactly what the needs are and, and if this will be appropriate for long-term use. Um, so I think this is, uh, exactly the way we had hoped that it would move along and, uh, glad that we now kind of checked off the box of going to the space committee prior to making some of these things happen. Um, and just kind of happy that things are coming together.
Supervisor Scott?
I just want to appreciate the space committee for, um, agreeing that this is a good way to move temporarily. So we have some time to be able to look at that building and really see what is needed to be able to maybe go to a permanent basis. I think there's a, definitely a lot of work that will need to be done after, um, this COVID emergency is over. But it's definitely the move that we need to go to make sure that we're not just putting, um, 40 people out on the streets that we have stabilized and they've actually housed some people out of there. So I'm really excited that, um, that we're moving in this direction.
All right. Thank you both. You know, on the follow-up, just on Carol's spot, I am on the space committee and yeah, long-term conversations need to happen. We also need to have, you know, community input and other things as we move through this process. And, um, you know, appreciated being able to convene that meeting so quickly after our, our board meeting last Tuesday, Carol. So thank you for getting that put together and everyone participated. So Supervisor Crandall or Supervisor Brown, I don't know if you have any comments at this point?
No, just like, I think it's a good, um, it's a good move and, uh, always having, uh, anybody that's in need, uh, the opportunity to be in a spot where they can, uh, be plugged into services is always, uh, what I think about. And, uh, this is a good move. So I think it keeps them in that realm if they, if they choose to go there, you know, so.
Okay. All right. If there's no more comment for the board, we'll go ahead and open this up for discussion to the public.
Mr. Chair, well, we'll
Yes, go ahead, Carol.
I might comment that there was a, an email public comment that's, um, was included in the agenda packet. Um, and the person asking the, or that made the comment asked a question about the location of Probations Day Reporting Center and if it's still happening at Juvenile Hall. And I see that Chief Probation Officer Rob Howe is on the line. He may want to address that or have a comment for your board.
Okay, uh, Rob, if you have a comment, go ahead and, uh, open up your mic. Uh, Jake is, can you get on?
Yes, this is a public comment?
Yeah, we're going to go to, um, Rob Howe at this point, uh,
Oh, yeah, yeah.
or director out there or chief.
All right. Rob, I am muted here.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Currently we don't have, uh, programming and classrooms going on at the juvenile hall primarily completely because of the COVID incident and how we're dealing with that. We're exploring other ways to complete those classes without having the, um, the, the group classroom face-to-face contact. My understanding of, um, of the proposal for using the facility is, uh, to use a portion that's not being utilized by our department with the Day Reporting Center anyway. So we're considering, uh, part of the talks are going to be what the, what potential conflicts or problems could be with cohabitating there. But at the time being, it doesn't seem to be something that, that's really going to, to cause a problem. Um, but as we progress in moving on from COVID and, and start classrooms again, that'll, that'll be something we look at.
Thank you very much, Rob. Thanks for clarifying that and answering the question of the public comment. Um, Supervisor Sabatier?
I do want to thank Director Howe. Uh, he's been more than accommodating to do tours. I think we're on our fifth tour now. Uh, he's been very patient with us to walk through and see how things are moving along. We started this process back in January, I think, if not maybe earlier. I forget the exact timeframe. Uh, then we made changes to the facility, uh, because of COVID-19 in preparation to maybe utilize that. So then we went back and did another tour just to see how things had changed. Just want to say I appreciate his patience. I appreciate his, uh, accommodating for the group, uh, to be able to see exactly how, um, how this vision would work. And he's been supportive the entire time, which, uh, includes, uh, sharing of the facility as well as, uh, uh, looking into the future and what, uh, things may hold for us. So I wanted to share that.
Okay. Yep. Now we're going to go ahead and Jake, open it up, uh, for public comment.
All right. It doesn't look like we have any hands raised right now, so I will unmute the floor. The floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please start by stating your first and last name.
Okay, here and none. We'll go ahead and, uh, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
And, uh, I, I won't provide specific, uh, information just because I, I don't want to get ahead of myself. But we did have a conversation, uh, we had an RFP meeting, uh, with a, a good number of nonprofits that took interest in helping us out with this. Um, and so I'm, uh, really happy that, uh, so, some, uh, nonprofits have stepped up in order to, uh, collaborate with the county, with behavioral health, with social services, the continuum of care. Uh, so I think that we're going to see something coming along real soon. And I believe that the RFP is going to be slightly massaged due to this, um, uh, meeting that we're having today. And, um, I'm, I'm happy that things are moving forward. And again, things are falling right into place.
Okay. Looking at this item, um, do you have any action to take on this, uh, today?
No, this was just a committee report.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more, uh, is there any more discussion, um, at this point? Okay. Seeing none. We're going to go ahead and, uh, move to the next item. We'll move to our 7.5 item. Or did I skip one? Yep. 7.5. Item 7.5. Consideration of waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 3.8.2 as if it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of the goods and services and be approval of the agreement between the County of Lake, Crestwood Behavioral Health for Adult Residential Support and Specialty Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, uh, for a contract maximum of 1.2 million and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Uh, and we have the, uh, Behavioral Health Director here, Todd Metcalf. So go ahead.
Yes. Good, uh, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Um, you know, my name is Todd Metcalf and I'm the Director of Behavioral Health Services. So, um, what Supervisor Simon just said, what you have before you, um, is a contract with Crestwood Behavioral Health, which you've seen, I'm sure before. It's funny, this just came to the board, um, a few weeks ago to increase last year's, um, uh, contract. So Crestwood Behavioral Health, um, operates residential facilities, including, uh, board and care, skilled nursing and mental health services. Um, currently we have a total of 18 clients, um, placed in the various Crestwood, uh, facilities. Um, seven in skilled nursing, um, three in board and care and eight, um, in locked mental health services programs. Um, the reason that we are contracting with, uh, Crestwood Behavioral Health is because there are no, uh, local organizations that provide these types of services, um, specific to individuals experiencing mental illness. And it's interesting that the topic right before this was about Old Juvenile Hall, because I know you guys have heard me talk about, um, maybe one day turning that facility into something like this. like this because look at the contract maximum amount is 1.2 million dollars. So, I'm hoping in some point in time, we might be able to create a facility like this in our own county, but that being said, because of what we have to deal with, we're mandated to provide these services and so, we have to send our clients out of county to provide these services. So, with that, I'm asking the board to approve the agreement between Crestwood Behavioral Health and the County of Lake for the next fiscal year and authorize the board chair to sign.
Thank you, Todd. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you, Director Metcalf, for providing some details. In light of the details, it's utterly depressing that 18 folks are getting helped for 1.2 million dollars. It's just such a large amount, but I understand. I know every school, every county is looking for psychiatric services and it's just not available at the rate that we're looking for. And so, unfortunately, supply and demand makes it a very expensive demand and it's a demand that we need to meet, not only for state guidelines, but also for the clientele that you're dealing with at behavioral health services. And so, it's also one of the main reasons I wanted to make a comment is I appreciate, it seems to me that you heard us loud and clear during our budget meetings last week and that you put in a special note in the contract saying that there may be some reductions due to, you didn't say due to budget restraints, but obviously, it was because of that. So, I appreciate you adding that language inside the agreement. And I too, you and I have had many of these conversations. Let's continue and see what we can do to keep this money in the county in the future, but today, unfortunately, it's just not available for us to keep it here and the people that need your services need this service, so let's make sure they have it available to them.
And I'll add, the 1.2 million dollars is staggering, but we ended up last fiscal year, or this, I should say, this fiscal year, having to increase our contract amount to that to accommodate, you know, adjustments in rates and increase in need. So, we're just sort of carrying over what we've done this year and the next. And again, you know, my long-term hope is to provide or create some sort of a facility here that we can have people here and keep the money here. So, thank you Supervisor Sabatier for your support.
Yep, thank you, Todd. Supervisor Scott?
Director Metcalf, I just wanted to thank you for all this hard work you're doing. I know I've heard you say many, many times that you want to get programs into our county and for you, I think it's not just about saving the community money, but for allowing these people to stay in their community so they can have visits from family and friends and stay connected. So, I just thank you for everything that you do and I think we definitely need to be approving this and looking for ways we can bring our people home.
Thank you, absolutely.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, again, thank you, Todd. I just wanted to ask, I read in the actual memo that it probably takes a lot of work to look at having these services in the county, but do you have any gauge on how that looks in the future? I mean, I'm not against this right now. I understand where we're at, especially with the situation going on with COVID and everything else, but is there anything that, you know, is there anything, is there any other entities trying to, in the county, trying to initiate anything like this?
Not in our county. I know if you may have or may not have heard, you know, they're working on developing a psychiatric health facility over in Mendocino County and that went to the voters. It was on the ballot and people had to vote for it. They're still, it sounds like they're still working on putting that together. I've been in communication with my counterpart over there because she's asking if we could use that facility and by all means, we hope to, but that still sounds like it's years away. And, you know, neighboring counties such as, you know, Calusa, Glen, and Tahima, they don't have a facility like this either. They're doing the same thing we're doing, sending people out of county and what do you think's happening? The money is following those people and, you know, I don't know how to put something like this together, but I'm not going to give up. I want to have conversations about it because if there's some way to figure out how to keep one or two or like I said, 18 folks are placed out of county, the money would follow that and I want to see it here. And you'll hear more about it when I have my turn at these economic meetings because this is what I want to talk about, but I need, I need help in figuring out how to pull it off. But the money is there, it's just kind of the chicken and the egg. What comes first? We bring the people back and where do we put them? So, that's why Old Juvenile Hall is still on my radar for something like this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, Todd, thank you. And since I've come on the board, I've heard that many, many times, so I think that's a great long-term vision and ultimately, you hit on the point, you know, that money would stay here in our community, create jobs and another workforce, another opportunity while also being able to have the folks that are going through these difficult situations close to their families, Supervisor Scott said. So, ultimately, I think we will be able to figure something out. Where it's at, I think still needs to be the discussion we need to have, but ultimately, I think that's a great idea. So, there's no more discussion from the board, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public and then move from there. So, go ahead, seeing no more discussion at this point, we'll go ahead and open it up. Jake, go ahead and open it up to the public, the public comment, please.
All right, so I mute the floor here as we don't have any hands raised.
Yep, I don't see anything on my participation list, okay.
The floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please start by stating your first and last name.
Okay. Seeing none, Jake, go ahead and close the room and we'll bring it back for action.
All right.
Bring it back to the board for action. Go ahead, board.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services and approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for adult residential support and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 2020, '21 for a contract maximum of 1.2 million dollars and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Uh, just clarification, do we need to do two motions on this one? We need a waiving the formal bidding process and then approving?
Mr. Chair, you can do it in one motion as long as you're with the understanding that if both, if one of the items is challenged, the whole item will come back.
Okay. All right, is there a second? And I forgot who's the second. Supervisor Scott, okay, go ahead, let's get a roll call vote. Johanna?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on our agenda here, just for time's sake, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and we're going to do our supervisor calendars and then we're going to take, we're going to take a break. Thank you, Todd. We're going to take a break. That way, we're going to move a little bit of break here so we can come back for our one o'clock workshop in the afternoon and then finish closed session, which won't be long after that. So, you know, that's how we're going to proceed at this point. Want to make sure we have a good discussion at one o'clock, one to three, and then finish up with our closed session items, which should not take too long after that. So, Supervisor Weekly Calendar, Supervisor Sabatier?
Okay, first off, I want to say somebody contacted me and wanted to publicly appreciate the work done by code enforcement 10 days before they contacted me. They had contacted code enforcement to do some cleanup of some issues with vegetation. 10 days later, code enforcement, with I believe a little bit of help from Public Works, was out there cleaning things up and helping maintain the area and so, they were highly appreciative of the work and I just wanted to make sure to send that off to staff as well, that your hard work out there is appreciated. It looks to me, since it's towards the end of the month, that my calendar is fairly blank at this moment. I do have a CC4C meeting tomorrow. Again, Citizens Carrying for Clear Lake, the group that does a lot of cleanup. On Friday, I have an EOC call just to kind of check in and see where we're going with COVID-19. I was invited to a groundbreaking over in District One and we've already had that come out to the board before, so we're all aware of that project and I'm looking forward to that project coming to fruition. Then, I have a PSPS committee meeting occurring on Friday in the afternoon. We are not forgetting that PSPS is still a potential reality for us in this fire season and as we go through summer and early fall and we're trying our best to mitigate any of our problems that we have experienced in the past because of PSPS. Let me see, the following week, looks like another EOC call in the morning on Monday, meeting, no, that's not, maybe it is. And then, meeting with our CAO, Ms. Hutchinson, just to, Ms. Hutchinson, to go over the agenda and discuss some long-term projects as well. Other than that, typically, just been working hard on other long-term projects in between, working with constituents, listening to constituents and also going and talking to local businesses as we receive some of the complaints that Public Health is receiving as well, which I have to say, I've had some really great conversations and it's actually been good for me to have those conversations. So, I'd say at the moment.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow, I'll be listening in to the opioid prevention summit done by Mental Health. I listened yesterday, there were some great speakers and some great information given out there, lots of energy. It's a Zoom summit. I was a little skeptical of how that was going to work, but it seemed to work very well. I'll be attending 11 o'clock COVID center meeting tomorrow and then a First Five Commission meeting at 2 o'clock. On Thursday, I have a 9 o'clock Hope Rising meeting and the rest of the afternoon looks pretty clear. On Friday, I'll be speaking at the Mental Health Summit in the morning. And then, Monday, I have meetings with Hope Rising in the afternoon and then back here on the 30th in the afternoon.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so tomorrow, I have a meeting with Mars at 8:30 in Quill Lake Oaks and then Blue Collar at 9:00 p.m. Thursday, I have a couple meetings with constituents about some things they're working on. Friday, I don't know if we're doing the Blue Collar Friday or the week after, I'm not sure how that works, but otherwise, I'll be on that. COVID recovery on Monday and of course, I wanted to remind just the constituency about the Potter Valley project, of course, you know, the planning group had submitted their FERC license and June 29th is the date to submit comments. And so, I urge you, if you have, you know, if you have the desire to submit comments on that, any agency, any, you know, tribe, et cetera, reach out to other individuals and you want to submit, the 29th is the date to do so. And I need to give you some other, I think I'll be posting a way to do that on my Facebook. So, if you find my Facebook account, I'll give you steps to do that. So, otherwise, Monday, I said we have the COVID recovery meeting and then I'll meet with Carol and then back here Tuesday for the special meeting.
Okay, Supervisor Brown? Not sure if I see him anymore. Supervisor Brown, I think, has left us and we'll be back at 1:00. So, go ahead and go through my calendar for this week. Obviously, agenda review after today's meeting, you know, tomorrow, don't have much on the 24th. Hopefully, enjoy the day, that day. On the 25th, at the ESGPA, this is one I can call in on or the Rural Counties ESG, JPA, Board of Directors tag meeting, I'll probably jump on and listen to that for a while. And then, on Friday, kind of got a full schedule, have the DOC call in the morning, meeting in the morning, have the groundbreaking out for the Valley Oaks Project in Middletown out here, out by the roundabout and then I will be speaking also on the opioid summit that is happening. I was happy to be asked and I think I go on at 11:45, I think, is my time. I'll double-check that, but I'll be doing that also. I think I'll follow the sheriff and I think that's a great thing that's happening here in our community. Also, that day, I had on later on that day, I don't know if you had it on there, but I got on mine, the 26th for a PSPS committee meeting.
Yeah, on Friday.
Yeah, on Friday at 3:30. And then, you know, nothing on the weekends at this point. We'll continue, obviously, as the things are sent out to go talk to businesses that need to be spoken with and then on the 29th, have the Health Department call in the morning and then the Recovery Work Group at 12 to 1:30. And then, back here for the 30th, our 1 o'clock meeting in the afternoon and the workshop for economic development. So, that's it at this point. So, we'll go ahead and break at this time and we'll be back at 1 o'clock for our afternoon workshop and finishing up closed session. So, we'll see you guys at 1 o'clock. We'll see everyone at 1:00 p.m. Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our Board of Supervisors meeting for June 23rd, 2020 year for Lake County Board of Supervisors, our 1:00 p.m. item, our 6.4 item, which is Board of Supervisors Workshop with County Department Heads on Economic Development. I'm glad that we're able to bring this back. We had some initial meetings in the beginning of the year and this is just a continuation. COVID-19 obviously put everything on hold and now, we're going to go ahead and continue this. So, Carol, go ahead and turn this over to you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to do a share screen and then we'll get rid of this when it's time for everybody else to talk. I'll just make a few brief remarks to kind of, you know, refresh our memories as to why we're here. So, give me just a second. Okay, so, on January 22nd, 2020, your board hosted a public workshop. It was called Revenue Generation and Economic Development for the Future Sustainability of Lake County. That session brought the Board of Supervisors and all county department heads together for a very candid discussion of the great need to grow our local economy as a means of promoting financial stability for residents and for county government alike and the role every department has in making that happen. There were some very broad themes that came from that discussion. First, we need to, well, not first, I shouldn't say that. They are not in any particular order. These are the themes. We need to focus forward and build the future we want to see and not fixate on the past disasters. Remember that discussion, supervisors? You know, prior to this workshop, we tend to start almost every sentence with our past disaster experience and so, there was consensus that we really needed to take a more forward-moving thinking and not start every sentence with our disaster history. We need to collaborate with strategic partners to promote healthy and safe physical and business environments and make it easy for people to invest in Lake County communities. We need to fight to bring state and federal dollars into Lake County to support water, sewer, and road network needs. Local residents can't carry all of those costs. We need to mobilize our municipal advisory councils, promote volunteerism, and rally support to efficiently meet community needs. We need to support county staff and make a real and concerted effort to attract and retain quality talent. We need to efficiently use county office space and cut costs where it is appropriate to do so. We need to take care of people of all ages with effective social services that stabilize and transform lives. We need to clean up neighborhoods in high-traffic corridors such as the Long Highway 20. We need to rebrand and tell the story of what a beautiful place Lake County truly is. With limited resources, it is important that we do a great job prioritizing the work we undertake. When the general conversation was wrapping up back on January 22nd, it was really clear that more discussion needed to be had. Gathered robust public input when developing our general Vision 2028 Priorities Statement, Supervisor Brown felt very strongly that the public should remain involved. in developing and setting priorities for economic development. There was more consensus at that time that the discussion would continue in open session, as it is over the next four weeks. And there was also acknowledgement that some of the detailed work should be done in an ad hoc committee or a task force setting. It was also clear that several departments wanted more staff, but that probably is just not on the table right now, unless we could clearly demonstrate a position, that a position would be enduringly revenue positive. Workloads are heavy, but we have to find ways forward without increasing staffing costs. COVID-19 may have demanded more of, most of our focus in recent months, but economic development has never been more important. And I'm excited that we're getting back to this conversation today. We're all here because we want to solve the problems here in Lake County. We want to help Lake County move forward. One of our most basic needs is to ensure the infrastructure is available to make Lake County a great place to do business and a great place to live. In this context, infrastructure includes things like roads, water, sewer, power, and policies that promote private expansion of broadband. It also includes things like parks, permitting processes that are intuitive and easy to navigate, and fees that are optimally last set. Just last week, the Planning Commission had meaningful progress on the Maha Project, a 16,000-acre development that can be a real game changer for Lake County. Projects like that don't just happen. We have to be ready for them. And we want to be ready. We want to be open for business in Lake County. So these are all the reasons why Session 1 of our four economic development workshops is focused on planning, building, and infrastructure. So those are the opening remarks, and now I'd like to turn it over to the chair and each board member to say a little bit more before we ask department heads to open up.
Thank you, Carol, and, you know, really appreciate pushing to, you know, get this thing back on the agenda here. And I know COVID-19 is still in the background, but ultimately, as we had spoken at our workshop in the Lower Lake Community Building down there, and I think we're calling it the Town Hall. I forgot the name of it, but we're going to the Lower Lake Town Hall. I thought there was some real constructive conversation how we move forward. And since then, like you noted, there are some large projects that are going on, but the board has also recognized some other things we need to do. We passed our, obviously, Bruno probably talked about it, our broadband capabilities, expanding that, the dig wants policy also that was addressed, some of the other things that we've done. So I just appreciate everyone coming together and understanding the new environment that we work in, but kind of resetting the tone for Lake County is going to be very important as we come out of the next six to nine months. And a lot of these projects, I want to thank all of our department heads that have kept moving them along, because each one of us in each one of our districts have projects that are moving forward at this time, even though with all the challenges. So knowing what's happening in Lake County is very important. On the Lake Transit Area Planning Council, there's a lot of construction projects that are happening from Caltrans, which is combined with state and federal money, which will be improving our roadways, and then working locally with our Public Works Department to improve on that road infrastructure also is very important. Some other things that have come up too, I just want to, you know, highlight some of these things of, things that have been happening, as you're saying, looking forward. Conversation we had just not long ago with Jan Kopinger on an opportunity, maybe at, for our water down on South Main. You know, all those things fall into line with what we're looking at for the long-term viability and economic development opportunities here in Lake County. So those are my thoughts, and always things come up in thinking outside of the box on how we address these. One other thing was talked about today with Todd Metcalf, about bringing some of the services that were taking these dollars out of the county may create a new workforce that is needed right here in Lake County. We currently have the funding. Now we just need to find the facilities to operate these things, and the individuals and partners that are willing to do it with us. So I'm excited about the future of Lake County as we work through these COVID-19 things, and I appreciate the conversation today. Supervisor Chabatier?
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing this back. Economic development is not a short-term focus. It should be an all-time focus. I don't think we ever want to be standing still. We always want to be moving forward. So this is very important. I know that we had discussed a few items in, I believe it was February, that were seen as not possible for the County of Lakes, such as telework. And all of a sudden, here we are, we forced ourselves to be in the land of telework, and we're finding for some departments, it's actually beneficial to them. Behavioral health being one of them, where they're seeing better results with their patient interactions. It's not going to work out for everybody, but the fact is now it's opened that door for us to at least test it out. And I think that that's where the conversation needs to go, is things that we're not doing, because we can try really hard to do everything just right, but we need to do something different, because it's not necessarily, it hasn't resulted in what we've all wanted. I want us to think about how do we build more houses? It's something we've constantly wanted to do, but we're not seeing it happen at a level that we want it to happen. What can we do to reduce that? We just had the conversation about the fire fees. There's lots of other fees that come along with building a house, and what can we do to be more attractive for developers to do these things? I think we're seeing a lot of commercial activity as far as like the Maha Project, some of the cannabis activity that do result in generating revenue for us. But I want to see us also focus on the housing aspect, where we have not necessarily overcome the obstacle of the loss that we had in 2015, let alone the other losses we've had since then because of our disasters. We just have to try something new. We have to look out. I want to bring up Ms. Kopinger, Director Kopinger, who today we just approved in the consent agenda, her S G I P program, to fund a battery backup for one of our stations for the sewer treatment. Not saying the right word, but one of the sewer stations over in Clear Lake, and that's to help us out in dealing with PSPS and making sure that the infrastructure is still moving forward. Not enough people are going after the S G I P funding, and even with speaking with her this morning, there's so much money available, because not everybody, and I'm talking outside of this county, are accessing these funds. I think that we have some opportunities. Broadband, we're one of the first counties, if not the first county, to have a master broadband plan. And right now, R C R C is making that a priority for rural broadband deployment and enhancements, looking to get federal dollars. And soon there's going to be a bill in the state of California to also do the same, which will help us gain access to more funding. So I think we have to look outside of the box, and that outside of the box is going to be what is our long-term goal? And how do we get there without feeling that short-term losses are going to be things we can't deal with? I think sometimes we have to look at short-term losses in order to get to that long-term goal, because if we never take that short-term loss, we will never reach our long-term goals. It's a difficult task to do. It's a difficult hurdle to overcome. But I think that if we work together, we can make those things happen. So I'm looking forward to these discussions. I know that in the memo as well, it mentioned that in the long run, we would like to create an ad hoc committee of economic development. I'm excited to create that. I'm excited to keep this moving forward. This is again, a conversation that never, ever needs to stop. There is not a point in my mind that we say, I'm good with economic development. Let's stop talking about it. So let's keep this conversation going, and let's see how today goes.
Supervisor Scott, Tina? Can't hear you.
There we go. Trying to apologize in advance. I'm having issues with my internet. I keep getting kicked off. So just to make it fast, thank you, Chair and staff for bringing this back. I know sometimes when we get bogged down with disasters, we kind of put everything on the wayside. I'm glad that we're continuing this discussion. Economic development has to be a priority if we want to move Lake County forward. So I'm excited to continue having this conversation. Definitely have to be continuing and looking outside the box of what we can do to move Lake County forward. I also have been very excited about the different projects that are coming to the community. They're looking at us. We're still affordable to be able to purchase property, to have businesses. So it's, this is really the best time, and I'm excited that we're continuing to look at this.
Thank you, Tina. Supervisor Brown?
So I couldn't agree more with not prefacing every decision or excuse with, well, we would do this except it was for the disaster. Obviously, it's a reason for a lot of things that we haven't been able to do, but we still have to keep going. And there used to be a sign up, I don't know where it went, but it used to be a sign up hanging in the board chambers that said, "Serving the public is our job, not an interruption to our job." And that is our job. That's it. That we don't, we don't build houses. We don't build broadband. We don't do all these things. We allow for infrastructure, but that's to serve the public. That's what we do. Out of these disasters, sometimes comes opportunity. Sometimes we have a clean slate to start with. Examples of that is I can, Jan will remember this, but after the valley fire, her and Mark Dellinger and I, a few others, we tried at Anderson Springs, they tried to put a sewer system in there years ago, and it was, it went through the 215 process and got voted down. Right after the fire, I mean, literally the smoke was still in the air. We had that discussion. Now's the time to do it again. We need to bring this thing back, because it's the only way you're going to get rebuilt. And we did, and it passed. And so, you know, if we have those things, they're going to come up. We talked about this back in January, when we first talked about having these. We didn't know COVID was coming up. It's another disaster. We're in the middle of, let's move forward. Let's get, let's use this as an opportunity. The telework, telecommute, whatever that Bruno talked about earlier. I'm not a fan of it. I wasn't a fan of it, but it's proven to be effective in a lot of areas. So let's, let's build on that. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. And so those are the things, the water system upon cop. We had a, we had a discussion along, the same as the sewer system in Anderson Springs. Out of disaster comes opportunities. Let's capitalize on those. Let's get those things moving, get them rolling, not wait too long. And, and, you know, let's serve our public, you know, keep, keep things moving to where we can serve our public. We don't have to build government larger in order to do that. We can do it with what we have and make it effective. So that's, that's all I have to say about that for now.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Crandall?
Oh, yes, thank you. And I appreciate everything that's been said already by the other, by my colleagues. One of the things I've been saying since, I guess, since I held the position and I campaigned for the position, you know, I have always talked about economic development, and especially Highway 20 being one of the main corridors to attract that attribute. And so it's really a blessing for me, not a blessing, but, you know, I like seeing that it was highlighted in the presentation about cleaning up the areas and highways and presenting better. One thing I know that Lars has been working on in his department, in his, in his folks, his parks. And, you know, I know we weren't, it's a couple that we weren't funded on, but then there's some he's always constantly working on to try to make it better for the, for the county. And so like, there's a couple of them, I mean, meeting with them on this week about. And so, you know, and since this COVID situation's been taking place, that's one of the biggest statements I've been trying to kind of say all along was, we've always struggled with retaining and recruiting. And so for me, having, you know, some of these attributes we're forced to deal with, like telework, meetings as such, you know, you know, we're a little more, like I think Bruno said it last week, he was so glad he didn't have to drive to our R C R C meeting, and we kind of tag teamed that meeting here and there, whereas commonly, we would have to just be there, and we wouldn't be able to do that.
In Sacramento.
Right, right. And so those are the type of things I think people are going to start coming here for, not to mention the low amount of cases we've had, and I'll knock on wood on that, as long as we can keep maintaining that. You know, I'm really appreciative that, you know, already I've noticed people coming up trying to venture out and buy homes here in Lake County, because it's more of a safer community, if you think about it, with the, with the distance in general, where, you know. So, I mean, I'm concerned we're not too distant from each other, but I mean, when you get further out into Glen Haven and Upper Lake and Kelseyville and all these other areas, you know, you have that space. And so, so yes, I really appreciate this conversation, and I'm willing to do whatever I can to help facilitate and make things work. I like to solve problems, and I'm willing to get started on this conversation.
Supervisor Chabatier, you have one, one more comment?
Yes, thank you very much. And Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Brown reminded me of things that I wanted to say, which is the opportunity we have right now. And I think the number one thing we need to look at is talk to any real estate agent right now, and they're selling properties like crazy to people that are coming out of the Bay Area. Now, either A, we can just let that happen naturally, or B, we can have a plan so we can maintain our way of living so that it doesn't change the landscape of what we love here. And so by creating a plan that would attract people to come here and still maintain a low population density by not building high-density housing and things like that, we can still attract enough attention to us so that people come here, but we also don't change our lifestyle and who we are. We are a rural community. We all love that, and we can maintain that. But it takes a plan, and right now, we don't have that plan, and I think that's what we should be working towards. COVID-19 is absolutely an opportunity. We're surrounded by two metropolitan areas, one, two of the biggest metropolitan areas in the entire nation. Sacramento moving very fast right now, San Francisco already being what it is. So we have an advantage that we need to take advantage of right here. Again, we've been doing remote access work. We've proven it can happen. People are seeing us, and we have an opportunity, and I hope that we can make sure to grab that opportunity by the horns and lead it where we want it to go, not let it lead us.
Okay, Carol?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So certainly over the next four weeks, you're going to have all representatives from the A Team on board. This one just being the first. And so today, we have department heads and key staff from Community Development, Public Works and Water Resources, Special Districts, Environmental Health, Agriculture, and Public Services, Integrated Waste. So a lot of great folks on the line. And I wonder if we can kick off the group discussion by having the department head speak to some of their priorities, some of their barriers, and some of their needs. As you know, in advance, each department filled out a worksheet that described some of those issues, and if we could just start with that as a beginning point in our discussion. And if I could call on Scott DeLeon to kick it off, I would be greatly appreciative. Scott, if you could?
Sure. Good afternoon. I'll, I'll kick it off. Thank you very much for the opportunity. This is certainly a much-needed discussion, and I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the perspectives from the third floor. You know, being the department head of now three departments, all of which are pretty instrumental in economic development in Lake County. And when you look at the goals and objectives of the 2028 Vision document, there's, there's a number of bullet points there that, that the departments that I manage represent and have direct input into. And I think the thing that I would like for all of you and everyone who's watching today, the takeaway that, that I am hopeful to get across to everybody is that everyone here on the third floor is mindful of economic development and our role in it. We can, we can talk all day about the specific details and nuances about how we do things, and how can we improve, and, and all those kinds of things. And I'm happy to engage in, in those discussions. But I think the bottom line is that you know, that we know our role here and know how important each of these departments is. And, you know, again, there's, this, this could be a long afternoon, and there's a lot of other department heads that want to talk. You know, we can talk about Department of Public Works. I'm very aware of the road conditions and, and the negative impact that, that poor roads has. We're doing everything we can to hold this system together, and it's, it's not easy. The COVID-19 has reduced gasoline sales across the state. Our revenues are down. So we're being directly impacted by revenue from the state, from the gas tax. And that affects both the, the original highway user tax account money that we were receiving, as well as S B 1 funds. And, and so that impact is, is, is going to be felt. We're, we're having to do a bit of a, a reset, if you will, here with Public Works. We're going to be focusing on, on pothole patching. Uh, we're going to be focusing on, on, uh, pothole patching, uh, preparation, uh, for next year. Uh, we're not going to have a lot of big, big projects this year, uh, just because we just have not been able to plan for it because of the uncertainty of the revenues. So, uh, we're going to do, uh, some of the more basic maintenance things, uh, respond to safety issues, uh, respond to potholes and, and do our best to hold things together. We've got a, a few small projects, uh, but, um, going to really be working on, uh, trying to develop some programming for future years to, uh, to try to turn around, uh, the, the state of, of the roads in this county. Uh, one of the things, and you'll note in the document that I prepared for you, uh, that, you know, there aren't, there aren't a lot of things that money can buy. However, improved road conditions is one. And, um, we're, you know, we're looking at, uh, based on the most current, uh, pavement management report, uh, to, and to, um, to raise our pavement condition index to seventy, which is good. Uh, over the next ten years, uh, we need to invest ninety five point eight million dollars in that ten year span. We're, we're not going to be anywhere near that, uh, with SB one, uh, and our regular Hoota tax nu- uh, numbers. So, uh, we're going to be, uh, we're going to need to be looking at numbers more like, uh, a pavement condition index of fifty and, uh, and, and really without additional revenues. That's, that's about the best we're going to be able to do. Um, Community Development. What, what, uh, i- if there is a one department in this county that is the springboard to uh, the recovery and, and frankly, the rebirth of, of Lake County, it's Community Development. And, um, we are doing everything we can to not only stay, uh, relevant and stay busy and, and keep projects moving through, uh, this latest, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, disaster. Uh, we're, we're doing everything we can to move forward. Uh, we've got a great group of staff. Uh, they're, they're energetic, uh, they're excited to be here, they're hardworking. Uh, but I will say we're a little short on experience. And so, uh, we need to be investing in training. Uh, we need to be investing in, uh, sharing of knowledge between staff members and we're already instituting, uh, some, some really exciting programs. I, I sat in on one this morning and it was, uh, I, I just got to tell you, it was one of the, one of the most, uh, energetic, uh, activities that we've done, uh, since I've been here. And that was, we sat most of our planners down and we started talking through projects and we started talking through problems and issues and we, we had this open dialogue between all of these folks and different perspectives and, and the energy in that room was amazing and, and, uh, these folks are excited and, and, uh, they're looking forward to moving forward with things. So, uh, I, I think we're moving in the right direction here. There's a lot of things we need to fix, I get it. Uh, we're taking too long to get projects out. Um, uh, and, and it's a function of, of having available staff, uh, knowledgeable staff and, and trying to get out from underneath the backlog of projects. Uh, we have, uh, hundred and two current cannabis projects and, and, and I haven't counted the ones that may have shown up this week. So, uh, the, uh, the planners are, are carrying between fifty, thirty and fifty projects each. Some of our more experienced folks. Fifty projects is, is, I mean, I, I, I don't know how, I, I, it's not sustainable, I know that. And, and our performance, uh, is reflected by, uh, the, the amount of work that these folks are trying to, trying to carry. Code enforcement, um, you know, we've got probably close to a hundred, uh, illegal cannabis, uh, complaints or, or, or cases that we're looking at. Uh, and, and, uh, it was about sixty five or seventy here about three weeks ago. So I can only presume that we're closing, uh, closing in on a hundred. So, we're, we, we've got a lot of cases that we're dealing with in addition to all the other land use uh, problems and, and complaints that we're having to deal with. So code enforcement, you know, you talk about one of the, the goals of twenty twenty eight of, of, um, you know, cleaning up our neighborhoods through code enforcement. Um, it's, it's being tackled by four individuals. And, uh, so we're, we're, uh, we're spread pretty thin, but, uh, they're, they're a dedicated bunch and they're, they're going to work through it. The Building Department, I think is, is, uh, is also growing. We're, we're hiring more people, we're getting training done and, and I think, uh, uh, the way that I see things, uh, in that department here on the third floor, uh, we're making a turn for the better and, and, uh, we're, we're certainly making improvements. Um, I'm going to throw one thing out and perhaps it's not appropriate, but I'm just going to throw it out anyway. Uh, a- as part of my budget, I'm, I'm recommending, uh, Cannabis Division in, uh, Community Development. I think that it is going to be, uh, very important that we get a group up here that is, that is solely working on, uh, processing applications in the cannabis industry. I think we're missing out on, on some opportunity. In fact, I know we're missing out on opportunity because people are getting frustrated and, and the, the applications are taking too long. And, uh, we need to streamline that process. We need folks that are specifically trained in that and can work collaboratively with our Ag Department and, uh, Code Enforcement and everybody else to, to get these, uh, and the state, uh, to get these, uh, applications through. So, um, those are, those are some of the things, uh, here on the third floor. Uh, again, I'm, I'm trying to be brief, uh, Department of Lot of Resources, I'll just touch on them. I think our primary, uh, program, uh, for economic development, uh, here in, in this county is our Quagga Muscle Prevention Program. We, we can talk about economic development all day long, but if the lake gets infested with quagga mussels, um, it's, the, the discussion's going to change drastically. Uh, we're doing a great job with that program, uh, doing everything with grant funds. Uh, we're, we're looking to, uh, uh, upgrade and, uh, do some, uh, do some additional things with, uh, uh, electronic devices to help monitor boat movement throughout the state. Uh, and, um, I think we're doing a, a pretty decent job there and, um, just, we're going to continue to try to advance that program. Uh, so with that, I'll let some of the other department heads talk. I appreciate the opportunity and again, please, please know, uh, that, that everybody here on the third floor of the courthouse, uh, understands our role in economic development. So thank you.
Thank you Scott. Okay Carol?
Okay, we can just move on to the next, uh, willing department head. Um, uh, Jan, are you here? Could we, would you be willing to speak next?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Jan.
And like Scott said for his department, my department has also always got our eye on, um, economic development. We know that our number one objective has to be strengthening and developing water and sewer infrastructure so we don't have to turn businesses away because we don't have the capacity to handle whatever waste they might generate. And, uh, we have, uh, in the past, well, Rob Brown was right about using a disaster as a springboard. We actually did come up with some very good solutions that were very beneficial. The Anderson Springs Sewer is one that was a result of the valley fire, all grant funded, uh, entire public sewer system there. Uh, the Cobb consolidation, that strengthens eight little water systems that were just struggling. Now they're going to be much stronger. And as a result of that one, another consolidation's taken place in the Riviera area. I think it's going to involve eight very small water systems. Going to make them stronger and their infrastructure will be better able to serve fire flows, building, uh, codes and, and some good things coming out of the bad thing. So it is good. Also, those disasters did open us up to a lot of grant opportunities. And what, one of the objectives I've had is trying to strengthen infrastructure without taking out any loans or bonds or anything that would saddle all of our property owners for forty years with these payments. And we have aggressively gone after grants. Right now I've got a total of about thirty three million dollars in grants that are in, most of them have all been approved, I'm waiting funding agreements, some are in environmental review, they're all in various stages. But, um, they're all, every single one of them is to upgrade infrastructure, save, uh, money in the long run, sustainability. Just, a lot of it is, uh, thinking outside the box too. Somebody said that earlier and I think that's critical. It, it takes a little more work, it's a little more difficult, but we have to think outside the box. And, uh, that's one of the things that my staff and I are working on. Our greatest barrier right now is, uh, we keep losing our qualified staff. We have all new people. I just accepted, I think, my fourth resignation today. People are just leaving in droves again. And, uh, this, this does come up every so often, but so we have new staff and they require a lot more training, a lot more handholding. By not having that, uh, long-term employee that can take the new ones under their wing and kind of show them the ropes. It, it really does put more of a burden on us and slow us down a little bit. And, uh, I do, I know for a fact that most of them left because they got jobs making better money. And that is one of our barriers, but I know that you've heard it before and you're aware of that. Um, another thing we're doing in addition to strengthening our, uh, infrastructure is we're constantly looking at ways to reduce costs, uh, in the future. Because if sewer and water rates exceed the county's cost of living and people can't pay that, we're not going to be able to attract customer, uh, new property owners and new development. So, our number one expense in addition to personnel is utilities. So a lot of our focus is on reducing PG&E costs, reducing our reliance on PG&E. And, uh, Bruno mentioned our Tesla battery backups. We, we're going to be putting in, uh, I believe it's nine of them. And they will allow us to switch over to battery backup for four hours or more during PG&E's peak use time that they're going to force on all of us here in a couple of months. That is also our peak use time. It's when people get home from work and they're showering and washing clothes and it's when the water and sewer is used the most and we need that power. So we'll be able to go every day onto the battery backup and see. The total cost of that project is about eleven million dollars is the value of it. And the, uh, it's all grant funded, it's not going to cost us anything. But in addition to the equipment that will be installed and the money that we will save in PG&E, so we're pretty excited about that. It will also help us during disasters because you know, we have staff out there shuffling portable generators, sometimes in fire, windstorm, whatever. And it's going to, uh, keep our employees safer, it's going to reduce a lot of their work. So, uh, we're also going to reanalyze our solar field analysis. The, uh, solar arrays that were purchased in two thousand eight, I'm not really satisfied that they've saved us any money. Uh, they're, we're paying about what we pay PG&E, it was a power purchase agreement. And I need to look at possibly purchasing them outright or renegotiating that agreement because I got to say, it's not given us much of a benefit. Uh, I'm in talks with NCPA about taking over the Middletown Solar Array, which would be able to run the Middletown Sewer Treatment Plan, which by the way, we did just get approved for a five million dollar grant for the upgrades on that plant. Um, they should be, we should be getting a funding agreement here any day to get started on that. And, uh, some discussions about the possibility of some cogeneration projects with Scotts Valley Polinians for bioenergy project. Uh, I also want to, uh, really investigate possibility of hydroelectricity. We have millions of gallons of water run through pipes in this county. And if we could put that to use, uh, producing some electricity, it would help us again further get off our reliance to PG&E because these PSPSs are very painful for water and sewer. Um, we also have tried our best to work outside the box, think outside the box. We work with businesses, um, sometimes we can come up with creative solutions to reduce their BOD and waste so that they can meet our treatment standards. We've helped developers secure connections and move existing connections from parcel to parcel when it's legally, uh, able to do so. Uh, we'll work with new developments to make payment arrangements for capacity expansion fees because sometimes those are a barrier to progress. And, uh, we do make sure that all these solutions that we, when we're being creative, will not violate any ordinance or regulations and they don't harm any existing customers or the capacity of any district. But sometimes just a few little flexible tweaks can help a development move forward. I, one of the things that I saw a couple other departments say they really wanted, uh, electronic payment options. We do have electronic payment options. It's based, the fee that's charged to customers is based on how many customers are using it. If we could get more customers using it, that fee would go down. And I have really hoped that other departments would jump in and we could all do one contract because then we could all get a much better fee. Right now I think it's two ninety five per transaction. If we could get that down much lower, it would be more attractive to all of the people that live in Lake County.
Quick question, Jan? Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure, is it two dollars and ninety five cents per transaction or two point nine five percent inter- uh, two point nine five percent, uh?
It's two dollars and ninety five cents per transaction.
Thank you.
And it would drop considerably if we can, uh, generate more use. So if we could team up with other departments that want to have this and it's already been in place. We've had it for at least two years, maybe three years now. We, we have no complaints with it. Um, it would be really good for all of us because then we could all get, if we could offer it for even a dollar fifty a transaction, our customers wouldn't mind that. But two ninety five, if their bill's only fifty five dollars, eh, that's kind of, uh, out of, you know, out of whack for them. Um, and, uh, one, one barrier that I'll just throw out there is sometimes our own procedures and protocols can really slow progress down. Um, I, I think we talked about it a long time ago, about a few little tweaks to change orders and other purchases that we could do so that we don't always have to wait two weeks to get on the agenda to get something approved. And I'd really like to see some of those tweaks take place so that those of us that are needing to make these decisions, because a slowdown of even two to three weeks, you know, it can drive costs up and it, it makes bidders not want to bid on county jobs. And it just isn't, isn't, uh, moving us forward as quick as we would like to see. Um, I think that covers everything for me. Um, I don't know of anything else we can do at Special Districts to help enhance community development because I do think that has been our number one objective for at least the last three years and, uh, will continue to be. By only working on projects that we can get grant funding for, or we have collected enough capacity expansion fees to pay as we go, does limit a little bit of where we're working, but I don't think it's been limiting us much. Those, those disasters really did put us in a pretty good shape for getting the grant funds and we've taken full advantage of it. And that's it for me.
Thank you Jan. Thank you for that update and, you know, the innovations that, uh, both departments that have already spoken, uh, looking at the long-term stuff, I think, are really going to help us out. So, uh, we'll go ahead and move to our next presenter.
Uh, could we move to, um, Environmental Health? I know Denise and Jesse are both here.
Okay.
Denise and Jesse, are you hearing us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, so yes, Jesse King, our EH Director is also in the room with me. Um, so Environmental Health, um, is one of the, uh, six divisions I have in the Health Department. And they do have a very active role with economic development in certain, um, fields that have a health impact for the community. So, you know, that includes land, um, you know, someone's building a new house and they're, you know, going to go on to, and their septic system, uh, restaurants, opening, gas stations, um, all those, all those types of things. Um, swimming pools, tattoo parlors, um, there's a, there's a long list. And, and we recognize very much that, you know, it's our responsibility to, uh, try to come up with creative solutions that help businesses, um, open not only safely for the public, but, um, in a timely manner. Uh, with that said, um, you know, one of the, the big hurdles that Environmental Health has, and it's already been talked about a little bit, is, you know, training a staff. It takes, um, a quiet- It takes, um, a quite a while to get staff trained on any of, any of our many programs that we run here. Um, and then when you have staff turnover, you know, that, especially if you have somebody who's been around here for a long time, that knowledge base really hurts. Um, so it's a long process. And it's forever, just like a lot of the other departments, community development and, Jan, the regulations change regularly. And so new training, um, has to occur on a regular basis. Um, and that's a big challenge when you have, um, a small team. And, and our team is amazing. They work so hard. They are so diligent. Um, and, but, but they are a small team and they carry a very heavy load. The other thing that is a real, um, it's a barrier for us, and there's really, I don't know that there's any way around it, um, is all these, the disasters, while they've been really great, um, opportunities for, um, some departments to get funding, we don't receive any reimbursement for that. And every fire, there's a debris cleanup project, like the Valley Fire was a very lengthy project for, um, the Environmental Health Division. They oversee, um, and coordinate some of those efforts. And it's, it's ongoing for, well, the Minnesota Complex Fire, we still have twenty-three that haven't been cleaned up yet. So it's just those ongoing projects that they have to take care of and coordinate, um, that just don't go away. For the Health Department here, three of their employees have been working in the EOC since we opened. They're still working in the EOC. Um, we are trying to get some volunteers in here so I can get them back in the EH. Um, so those types of disasters have a, a different impact, um, for a self-funded department like ours. Because we haven't really been able to, uh, find any grants or opportunities that will help fund any of that. So, and it definitely creates a backlog in work. Uh, utilizing, uh, credit card payments, you know, that's a big one for us this next year. We really want to be able to help, um, our customers, both with the kiosks in our lobby, um, and with front of payments. We are moving towards the digitalized world. Land, uh, COOPA and solid waste are already all digitalized, all of our records. They're working on consumer protection and land at, um, at this time. It's a long process, um, to take all these records that we have going back, you know, years and years and years and years. Um, upgrading our current software, um, I had some communications with the, uh, the prior, uh, Community Development Director, and I haven't had the opportunity to reach out to Scott yet. They use a software company called Asella. Um, and our software company, uh, was bought out by Asella just about a year ago. And so I don't know what Scott's plans are, but when I was talking to the prior director, we were having meetings in conjunction about us upgrading our software so the two softwares could talk to each other. We're at a lower grade software than what they bought because we bought ours four or five years ago. Um, and that would allow, um, community development to look at certain things they needed in our system to be able to know that the septic permit was approved or it's in process and, and us the same thing with them. So it would, um, it would really help the, um, community not have to run between the two departments. And there is a barrier to that. The, the upgrade is going to cost about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we are hoping to do it next year, but with COVID and, you know, potential loss in revenue, uh, we'll have to see if that happens. We may have to hold off a year, um, on that. The electronic world has, has been working well for us, um, for the most part. Consumers have been able to email us their plans and, um, email us, uh, things that they need. And we've been able to give back to them, um, with that same communication we've been able to set up. You know, Zoom meetings, they've been doing inspections through a Zoom-type process. Um, some inspections, I'll let Jesse talk about that more, uh, where they're doing it through digital response and not, um, in person. That saves a lot of time driving around the lake and stuff. So everything that we can do in those fashions, we're trying to do to make it more, not only more efficient, um, but timelier for the customer. Um, we understand one hundred percent that our role is to be here for the community and to help them, um, through the process of stuff they need. I'm gonna stop there and let Jesse talk a little bit. Jesse, you have to unmute.
Um, you said she was in the room with you?
He's not in there. He's in his own office.
Okay, and is that high?
Chad, you can't.
It's Jesse Kane?
Yeah. I can see him.
Yeah, I can see him too.
Oh, okay, hold on. He doesn't know how to unmute, um, his device.
Can you unmute him?
Can you unmute him? He's on his, there you go.
Oh, yes, 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 I found you. You should be good.
Yeah, this is Jesse with Environmental Health. I just want to clarify, I was muted by the host, not myself. So I was helpless to get on the line. Uh, I, I want to add a few things to Denise, what she said. Certainly, um, the, the topics we were talking about, the economical development, the two things I got, the collaboration with the other department and also the permitting process. So certainly EH can streamline if, uh, if somebody come to our county with the project. So we certainly, we collaborate with other departments so we can get the project streamlined. So they don't have to wait three or four weeks. If we talk through, um, with the program we were talking about, that will help us tremendously. So we can, um, approve all these projects within a week or two weeks. Another thing I was thinking about, um, if we can have some kind of a task committee between the departments so we can meet once a month or twice a month where we can discuss all the projects that are coming our way. So we could be on the same page.
Great.
And that, that's all about, um, uh, for EH, if we can streamline our permitting process and collaborate with other departments.
All right, Chad. All right, Denise, thank you both. And yeah, yeah, you kind of finished it off with the most, you know, collaboration with other departments, communication by IT needs and, and other things, but also streamlining, uh, opportunities is, is, uh, yeah, it's very high on the list, helping the folks out with development. So thank you both. Um, Carol, do you want to move on to our, our next presenter?
Yes, could we go with Steve Hagic with Ag?
Yeah.
Hi, Steve. Do you have audio? There you go.
There he is. Okay, sorry. Um, so with the hemp program, it's not as bad as it was last year as far as.
I'm sorry, I think I muted him. Um.
I thought it said he left.
No, I didn't leave.
Oh, there you go. All right, you're back on.
I merged your phone with your name and that muted you. I'm, I'm sorry.
Am I, am I okay now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, sport has been around, allowing me to hemp program, uh, but it's not as hectic as it was last year due to the market collapse, new, new county regulations and, and, um, with the early activation of cannabis, the drive to grow hemp seems, seems to have declined. Can you hear me? What do I do?
Yes, yes, we can hear you just fine, Steve.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I was, I was told that you can't hear me. Okay, and I fully agree with, uh, with Scott Delion about a cannabis division. That would really be helpful for us. Um, let's see, what else? We're doing a new, a new timekeeping system where we're, where we could do one, one, one. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, someone says that I'm not. Okay, I'm, I, I, I'm going with him. With, with, with a timekeeping system where we could insert the time or activity one time and that would generate reports at the end of each month and at the end, at the end of the year. So that's pretty cool. Uh, we're trying to cross-train staff more, uh, once we get a stable amount of, of, amount of extra help people to allow that to happen. Because, uh, staff retention is fine with the, with, with the permanent staff, but, but, but not as much with the extra help. Um, we, we like to accept credit cards for our payments. And public outreach is a problem, but we're working on it. And speaking about public outreach, we are, we want to have a Spanish language, uh, part, portion of our phone tree. Um, and me, and, and on our website involving to use a pesticide in case someone has a problem with working in the field with an application or so. However, we don't understand Spanish very well, so we could put it on the website, put it on the, on the phone tree, but understanding what they were saying, we have to have someone else there to interpret what they were saying. So that's still a problem. And last but least, um, I don't, I'm, what I'm concerned with the most here is if there's a drive to build homes adjacent to or on Agland, that's a real concern for me. Agland is doing well at this time and it might be an easy target to build homes near or on Agland. But that's, but that creates problems with the right-to-farm stuff. Uh, there's normal activities, if you say, if a complaint says, well, I have the right to farm, it doesn't really help if you be a complaint and then it puts pressure on that ordinance. And, and on top of that, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's, uh, something called SIGMA, which I think you guys know about, uh, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And, and Big Valley is underneath that, that, that the program at this time. The program's goals are to, uh, monitor and, uh, manage groundwater that they think is being overdrawn. And if homes are built in the area, that's going to draw the water even, even more. And that will actually limit agriculture because, because the water will, will, will not be available. So my number one concern is basically to, I know the, I know the county wants more taxes to grow and stuff, not taxes, but homes to generate private taxes and blah, blah, blah. But it does concern me that we do it in our, in the right way and not impact Ag negatively. And that's it.
Thank you, Stephen.
And our last department head in this session today is Lars Uing with Public Services.
Hello, uh, so it's similar to, um, similar to Denise with her, with a comment of the, of, of a portion of the department that, that she talked on, um, uh, for business and infrastructure today, uh, at least public services, it's specific to landfill, solid waste, um, integrated waste management. Um, so we, uh, Supervisor Crandall had earlier mentioned parks and, uh, and, and there's a, you know, overarching discussion on, on building an infrastructure that would certainly affect, um, or at least in, in, include, uh, the Facilities Maintenance Division, um, and, and museums is also included in there, but that'll, that will be for a following week. So today, uh, specific to solid waste management, the, the, the big animal for, um, uh, for public services involvement with economic development is, is, um, uh, basically we, we, we want to not be seen. I mean, nobody wants to see the solid waste. They don't want to see it on the side of the road. They don't, they don't want to see it piling up in, in their, uh, in front of their homes, um, uh, public, uh, public roadways. Uh, and, and, and they also don't want to see the landfill. Um, uh, so the, the way we manage that is by, um, owning and operating a landfill so that we, we have local control. We maintain local control over the, the solid waste stream. Um, uh, economically, uh, we, we are a, a self-funded department, the enterprise fund, so it, 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 there is no, um, it pays for itself. Uh, so we have to, uh, manage those fees to ensure that we can, we can operate uh, year to year and, and decade to decade, um, in a financially stable manner. And that obviously affects, uh, affects the economy. We, we, uh, we maintain our landfill fees, um, at a rate that, uh, that we can pay for all of our, um, uh, regulatory requirements, um, and I, I will, uh, among other things, operational requirements. But we, we certainly do still have, uh, low rates in comparison to the, um, to other, other landfills around the area. Um, other landfills around the area also, it's, it's a mix of, of private and public. So, so we have a, a unique comparison, uh, but we do have, um, very low rates in the area. And I think that's economically what we can continue to do. Um, landfill expansion is on the horizon. Uh, we, we are, um, about, uh, two years, two to three years from, uh, breaking ground on, on the first, um, portion of that, which will be a, a few decades. Uh, it, it goes in phases. Uh, all said and done, it's about a, a fifteen to twenty million dollar project. And, and we, we are about eighty percent funded towards that. Um, so we, you know, we, that will help us, uh, to not have to raise rates, uh, any one, uh, particular year in order to pay for that as we go. So, so that's, uh, that is a benefit. Um, on the recycling side of, of, uh, solid waste management, the majority of, um, if not the entirety of the, the recycling stream that is managed in the county is, is on private businesses. Um, and, and I, I think economically that, that provides an advantage where we, we are bringing in businesses who are, um, helping to manage the solid waste stream and, and, uh, living and operating here in the area. Um, I, what, what we also do is, uh, similar to recycling, it's, but it's specific products. Um, and, and that, that would be, uh, grant funded, um, through CalRecycle, uh, grants that we receive to subsidize, um, uh, oil recycling, tires, um, you know, we, we provide, um, hazardous waste events, uh, monthly in, in different locations around the county. And those are, those are all, um, uh, largely grant funded and we, uh, we continually pursue those. Um, and, and there with no plans to, to stop those on an annual basis. Um, curbside collection with, um, with franchise haulers that we have, that, that certainly plays a, a, a large part in economic development. Uh, you know, we, the, we, we, we have franchise agreements so that we have some level of standardization and control over that, uh, that curbside collection, uh, economically. Um, and just, just from a, a general planning perspective, I, I, I don't think a, a community would want, um, you know, on any given road, uh, garbage day, uh, by company X to be on Monday and, and company Y to be on Tuesday and company Z on, on Wednesday. So by standardizing that, it, it allows that level of service, um, to be continuous. Um, and, and again, it is a partnership with, uh, with businesses that, that provide that service. Um, on the horizon, um, economically, there, there's a, a big push. We are, you know, you know, in a, in a very environmentally friendly, um, region, state, um, and, and there, there's, there are constant, um, environmental regulations that, that we are faced with, one of which, um, affects curbside collection and the landfill, um, which is SB thirteen eighty-three. It's a, a climate pollution prevention, um, uh, bill, which will, the, the intent is, is to reduce the, uh, the organics out of the, um, out of the waste stream. Um, and, and, you know, while that, you know, certainly is, um, uh, you know, has some benefits, i- it comes at a cost. So I, I, I think one of the, the challenges we have is, is kind of the balance between, um, environmental protections that, that have to be in place and, and the economic impact that those, um, environmental protections place upon us. Um, so looking, looking ahead, um, you know, as far as what, you know, what we can do, um, uh, Scott Delio mentioned, uh, project delivery and the, you know, the, the challenges there. And this, this, uh, next statement really extends beyond just solid waste management and, and to, to my department as a whole, which is project, uh, you know, a, a lot of different project management roles. Um, so one of the things that we're looking at doing is consolidating two existing vacant positions um, into one, uh, overarching management level position for project delivery, project management that will, that will help with just that, um, help with, with seeking grants that are out there, help with, with, you know, uh, having the time to, you know, to, to, um, um, get those projects, uh, uh, moving and rolling, um, because it is, it, it is certainly a challenge. Um, but a- across the board with solid waste management, uh, at the county, I, I, you know, I think that the, the less that we are seen, um, the less there is a concern, uh, of, of garbage, then, you know, that, that's probably good. Uh, we, we, you know, if, if garbage is front and center, um, then, then something's wrong. Uh, you know, physically, if garbage is front and center because we're charging too much, e- even though things are clean, then that's wrong too. So we need to find a balance with that. So I think that's, um, I'll just wrap it up with that. I appreciate the, the time. And, and again, next week, I believe, would, uh, would be the other divisions, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lars. Greatly appreciated. Appreciate all the department heads that, uh, have given the report today. And you're right, we'll work through everybody over the next month. Um, some key words, and I think, uh, for myself, that I really encourage here, obviously, streamlining processes. Uh, understanding, um, you know, and we already knew this, but just you guys reinforced, um, you know, our conversations we had back in, uh, just you guys reinforced, um, you know, our conversations we had back in uh, in February was, you know, economic development, having an opportunity, community development and other revenue generating uh, departments are something we need to focus on. We're talking about budgets and other things, uh, that's clearly heard, I think, from the board. Um, as we move through this process, um, I really like the way it's going today. Give out the reports, and then I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna turn this up, you know, open to the board here, and then have public comment. But um, you know, moving down the path, like we said, streamlining, technology, uh, you know, collaboration between departments, and then also being able to uh, move forward with some type of an ad hoc committee that would put together some recommendations to help with streamlining. I know we've talked about it a little bit uh, from a high level, but bringing back proposals that might give us opportunities. Supervisor Sabatier also talked about it, you know, there are going to be some things that we look uh, to give up at this point for the long-term goal. And uh, we need to just be able to focus on those things and help projects move forward uh, as folks are coming to the county. But uh, very encouraging. I'm happy to hear um, everything that's being thought about and understand that uh, how hard our departments work with uh, the resources they have. And we just want to thank each and every one of you. And um, you know, those are kind of my thoughts as a process for the rest of the day. Uh, so I'll just go ahead and um, turn it over to Supervisor Sabatier, and then we'll work through the rest of the board and then open up for public comment. Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead.
I I will warn you, I have a a list of things to discuss and and bring up and just kind of throw out there. Um, but I will try to be brief in all of those. Uh, for public works, um, I know that we had anticipated, uh, potentially looking at a sales tax initiative. Obviously, COVID nineteen put a complete stall on that because it would be rude of us to even uh, offer that to the community as we're struggling to continue as is. But part of that plan included having a five-year plan for our roads, and I think it's still important to have a five-year or ten-year. I think it's easier to do a five-year plan, and you know, with an asterisk next to it that says that maybe this won't happen on the timeframe that we're looking to do, but at least it's what we're we're expecting and anticipating to get done. When we have five-year plans for different uh, infrastructure uh, opportunities, it helps generate interest from those who want to develop as to, oh, well, that road's going to be better. Maybe if I invest today in the property, which may have less value than it will have tomorrow, once the road is fixed, then I can see a a um, uh, a return on my investment. And so it can help bring in more developers, more investors to want to invest in our communities. And when we don't have those plans, it's hard to tell what's going to happen in the thirteen hundred square miles that Lake County takes on. So I think that uh, that's one of my ideas is let's keep moving towards that. Uh, yes, we we can't keep moving for the um, the sales tax initiative, but we can keep moving on the five-year plan. Uh, for community development, uh, some of the uh, ideas that I want to uh, bring back that were discussed in January is right now, we ask for three percent construction fee uh, for what's the cost of your construction? Take three percent of that. That's what we get as a fee. And I'm looking for every possible way that we can reduce those fees. We talked about fire fees earlier, school fees. Uh, if you build ten houses, potentially, and I'm just making an average, it could cost you a hundred thousand dollars just to hook up to the laterals for sewer. And I know that Director Koppinger was talking about working with those developers and seeing about mitigating the cost. But how can we mitigate all of those costs as much as possible? And I'll get to some of the solutions here. I'm just putting out ideas of things that we can do to reduce the cost to developers so that they have more incentive to want to work here in Lake County, invest in Lake County, and us see the development. Um, for uh, code enforcement, uh, we've been talking about this for a while, and I think it's because the CBPG has been put on the back burner from the state. Uh, but CBPG program funds can help invest more into our code enforcement team. This is what the city of Clear Lake has been doing for the past five, six years. They're getting about three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year that they're putting into code enforcement, which allows them to have more feet on the ground, more boots on the ground to be able to get the job done. It's hard with four people to take on all of Lake County and the needs to clean us up. To me, the very foundation of economic development is public safety and cleanliness. And if you can feel safe and you feel like the the area is being tended to, then you're going to feel like this is a good place to invest in. And I think those are some of the foundations that we need to make sure to focus on. And I'm sure we'll be having our first, um, on our future meetings, having that discussion with our sheriff as well about uh, public safety. Um, for water resources, I think we're already doing it, and we need to keep focused on it, and we do keep pushing forward, and that's Middle Creek Restoration Project. Uh, that is a huge economic development project in order to make sure that our lake remains clean and is put back to its na- more of a natural state so that we can really take advantage of what that lake can offer to us economically. Um, special districts, um, yes, uh, special districts, so like sewer, we've talked about the full circle. Where is there not the infrastructure that is needed for developers to develop so that we can really focus on getting that infrastructure installed so that developers can develop? I know we've talked about it before, um, with Supervisor Simon about the water uh, restrictions, I forget the right word, over in Hidden Valley. What can we do as a board to help Supervisor Simon overcome that hurdle so that there can be development there? Um, credit cards, the answer is yes. One hundred percent yes. We have to be on the twenty-first century. Yes, there is a cost associated with that, but there's also the potential loss of not having that option there so that people can easily pay their bills or pay their fees uh, where it becomes another issue. Um, environmental health, let's talk about the septic tanks that are near around the lake that, again, potentially have uh, leech issues into the lake. How can we resolve that and change that? And that goes back to the infrastructure of sewer and special districts. How can we bring them into the twenty-first century to have access to the right systems so that they don't have any potential impact to our uh, our main body of water that we want to keep nice and clean and accessible to people for recreational purposes? Um, and then moving on to uh, software, and I'm gonna kind of hit on IT a little bit. Um, I used to do database programming. To not have a programmer in-house, I think is a huge loss because then we have to figure out how each program is going to work for each department, and one program doesn't fit every department. Having a programmer on board helps create the things we need to collaborate together, and I hope that we can have those discussions again with uh, Director French so that we can go ahead and take a look at what does that mean and what will that take? Because if we can personalize things so that we can have automated conversations where we're sharing what projects we're doing, we don't have to meet and sit down for an hour and a half or two hours to discuss it. It's automatically at our fingertips right away. Technology is a huge boon if we use it right, and I don't think we're using it enough. And I think right now we're moving in that direction, uh, but I think that we can use it even more. Um, as far as ag goes, uh, I appreciate um, our Director Hagic saying yes for the cannabis division. I want to say yes to the cannabis division where cannabis also covers hemp, where we can work together on those two things rather than keep them separate because there's a lot of overlapping issues and maybe something to look at that. Um, also for ag, and it's not going to be a popular thing to say, but we got Napa County grapes being grown right here in Lake County. They pay fifteen dollars an acre to grow that in Napa, and they pay zero dollars an acre to pay here. That's through legislation at the state level. Is that something we need to look at or not? I feel like we need to at least take a look at that and see what the advantages or what the losses would be. But right now, people are coming in this direction to use us for no more than fifteen percent of their grapes so that they can keep calling it Napa wines, but using our soils and our water in order to grow things. Um, as far as farm ha- farmland going to housing, uh, which also was brought up by our ag commissioner, uh, I I know that on a house-to-house situation, that might be more difficult. But as far as large projects, I know Lafco is here to protect ag land and open space. Uh, I know that I'm on the board, Supervisor Simon's on the board. I will continue my best to make sure we protect ag land. Our number one commodity here in Lake County is our agriculture that we have. Uh, and we want to make sure and preserve that. Uh, public services, an idea, uh, I don't see any uh, too much signage to let us know where our parks are. Maybe we need to work on a master plan on directional signs throughout our county to lead people coming through our county to where are places to enjoy and hang out and picnic and go to the docks and put out your boats. Uh, we need to know where those are, and there's not enough direction for people who don't live here to make sure that they can find all the commodities that we have. Um, also, we discussed haulers. This could potentially create more jobs. Why is it illegal for somebody to haul someone else's garbage, but yet we're actually contracting with some of those haulers to help us deal with garbage when we're we're needing to clean up somebody's yard? If we allow those people to truly be haulers, then maybe there would be more job opportunities for that. I feel like some of our rules and policies are restrictive in not allowing jobs, and maybe they're doing the job um, under the the radar, uh, under the table, but maybe putting them out in the open will help us generate more revenue and generate better, more clean work. Uh, franchise agreements, are there any that we haven't updated lately that we need to create, whether it's with PG&E, whether it's with uh, MediaCom, whether it's with other uh, entities that we're working with? If they're using our roads, if they're using our infrastructure, maybe there's potential there to create and generate more revenue. Um, I know that uh, maybe unpopular, but mandatory garbage, let's talk about it again and see what's possible. Um, and I'm I'm wondering if, uh, I see that Michelle Scully is on here. Uh, she is our uh, uh, person who is representing Lake County on the Lake EDC Board, and I'd like to know what their needs are from us so that they can truly provide assistance in getting us to where our final goal is. Uh, I think that that uh, it feels at times that the County of Lake and the EDC are not necessarily a hundred percent working in tandem. I think we have with broadband and we are trying with the airport. Uh, but I'd like to know what uh, guidance Lake EDC can provide to us to better work together to get the results that we're looking for. So those are ideas and suggestions that I'd like to put out there. Um, I think we have a lot of opportunities, uh, and I think that we can definitely grow and and uh, do something really great in the next four to five years. Nothing's gonna happen overnight, uh, but I think we have the potential.
Thank you, Bruno. Uh, Supervisor Scott?
Wow, Bruno, you just, that was like twenty years worth of work you just put out there for us. But um, that's exciting, the direction that you're going. Um, so how do we go about bringing some of these ideas back? The Supervisor Sabatier brought up. I I really believe um, in the cannabis, um, the one. I I definitely think we need to have a division to be able to get through that cannabis, all those um, applications that are coming through, and make sure that we're not losing people coming into our county that are maybe looking other directions because we're moving so slow. So how would that work? Is that something that we need to agree here? That maybe that's something that we want to bring back, and that would be at budget time?
Definitely at budget time.
Yep, budget time. But also, you know, we talked about setting up a committee uh, that we can be bringing these things back. So over the next four weeks, we're looking at workshops. But today, hopefully at the end of this, we'll talk about creating something that can start these ideas that are being thrown around and working with our department heads how we accomplish uh, these ideas that we have uh, thrown out. So um, that's kind of the vision, uh, I think, between now and as we move forward. Um, so that's why we're having them now, and we can get something set up and then start having some meetings and bringing back some focused opportunities uh, to make changes here. Like I said, it's gonna take time to do that, uh, but getting started, uh, you know, is the time. And we would have been doing this earlier except for our friend COVID nineteen at this point. So um, every pandemic we're going through has been very trying, and we'll go from there, you know. Um, so we'll move on with this um, with this thing in that manner. That's the thoughts, I think, with this board can move forward and bring the actions back, Tina.
Okay.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, I just, I I want to follow up because Tina just reminded me when when she said Bruno just gave us twenty years of work to do. Um, she gave you guys twenty, he gave you guys twenty years of work to do. But and I and I don't want to be a wet blanket because that's, I really think we need to look forward. But basically, he just gave us a twenty-year history lesson also. Every one of these, we've talked about for the twenty years that I've been here at some, one point or the other. And that's not to say that they're not going to be done. But the thing, the thing that I regret, looking back, is that we didn't eat the elephant one bite at a time. We tried to eat the whole thing. Need to find out what it is that we can do and start doing the, do the short-term stuff. Start showing some progress. You'll feel better about it. I'm just, this is advice to you guys because I, I'm not going to be here when when all this starts. And so if I've learned anything at all, it was you take on too much, you end up doing nothing. It's like a, it's like a guy that wants to play twenty instruments. You can be a little bit good at some of them, or you can be really good at one of them. So um, that's the only, that's the only advice I would say is find some of them that you can do right now, make them happen, and then work on the other ones long-term. But don't try to do all of them at once because you'll end up doing none of them.
Okay. And I agree with you, Rob. You know, I I think some of the initial things that were talked about today, uh, credit cards, you know, getting credit cards, streamlining processes, you're right, start with the small ones that we can accomplish immediately and then work on the big goals. And Rob, we appreciate that history uh, that you have sitting here on the board and bringing up those things. So thank you very much for um, bringing that up. Um, EJ Crandall?
Yeah, thank you. And I, you know, I do appreciate that um, that that insight and that knowledge, um, because it, nothing worse than working on so many different things at once and not getting any done. And I'm one of those guys that I'm still only good at a, a little bit of each instrument. I still haven't mastered one. So I understand that uh, that that metaphor there, Supervisor Brown. But um, either or, I um, you know, I I actually have been talking to different groups that can work with like uh, special districts and 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 public services and whatnot. I just, I'm doing a lot more to not just bring them to you. I want to do a lot more work rather than bringing them to you and adding extra work. You want to make sure they're a good fit. And so there's different people that email us, and I'm sure other supervisors as well, um, with different ideas. You know, they always want to talk solar. They always want to talk, um, you know, uh, different garbage-esque gypsies, things like that. Um, but then there's always a catch, or there's always something in in between. So um, I, you know, my experience tells me not to bring them forward all at once because it just provides more work, and then you end up kind of, the wheels keep turning. So I've kind of staved some of these different groups off. Um, and also another thing that I I I really don't mind doing, um, and it's really all I kind of know how to do, it's what I've been doing for a while, is um, you know, I I've been talking about this today. I think I talked with the um, Scott DeLeon today about this, is I, if there's someone in my district that's trying to do something, I try to, try to do what I can to help them with as much as I know. Um, I I don't, I I think a lot of it can, a lot of constituents get the impression that we can come and make you guys do something. It's not, it doesn't work that way, and I have to explain it to them. So I just try to educate and make them aware. Um, and so so you'll notice that if I do contact, um, it's usually because they're referred back to me. And so um, if they're referred back to me by any department, uh, I I just would appreciate it. Any any way we can get an email telling me where I can educate them more. Because I want to help them get to you, but also be, get to you in a spot where they, they are in a spot to do something, not just to come and, I don't want to pass the buck. Passing the buck's the worst thing, but I want to be able to present them with work that they've looked into and they understand how to move forward with. Um, and I'm actually starting to work on getting a couple of people to help me with that as a, as a supervisor, uh, some other folks, because I understand, I don't like putting this work on admin either because they have a lot to do. So just, I'm just letting you know that from my end, that that's, those are some things that I, that I've been trying to 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 look at on on my end. Um, I do like the idea that Bruno brought up about CB, CBDG, um, because a- anything we can do to get code enforcement, um, you know, a a little more um, vast, have more, have more people, boots on the ground, as they say, um, it would really help. I I mean, going around the area, we were working on a good project uh, right before the uh, March situation is actually a week before March, our our um, fight with light, whatever you want to call it, was an initiative to try to clean some of the areas. And and I still ended up doing some of it, some of us did, um, the best we could. But um, cleaning up the area in your own um, town. And so just, just those type of things, um, you know, we we had a good collaborative going. Uh, Lars, you you introduced us to the gentleman from uh, the Lake, the Lake Waste Department, things like that. And so I I just, I just think too, when when we, if we have more folks uh, involved with code enforcement, those are the folks that really uh, need need to be threatened, not threatened, I don't like the word threatened, but they need to be imposed with fines. They need to be dealing with these things. I was really glad last year towards the midsummer, we were getting some of those um, those nuisance abatements coming forward. And I know they, they're they're back-ended because we don't get the funding until usually after the the sale. But there's, there's just, I I have a lot of those complaints, and um, I know you get them too. Um, and I want to do my best to be able to bridge those and help solve these problems as well. So um, again, um, appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing. And uh, Bruno, Bruno pretty much said a lot of what, what I had written down. So uh, anyhow, there you go.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Go ahead, Bruno.
I I will not disagree at all that it's all about the one bite at a time. Uh, and we are trying to eat an elephant. We 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 are wanting to be in a different place.